And then it has been bone dry, um absolutely bone dry and it rained a little bit up there.
On you? And uh. You did call the order?
Mayor Ikorst.
Here.
Council Bergman.
Here.
Council Phillips.
Here.
Council Richards.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh the agenda in front of us. Um I'd like to make one add under public works. The only point uh is an update regarding the uh Carl Chevrolet pickup form. Want to update the council on that.
I'd like to also make an update. So under personnel and community center A, I would like to strike number one.
And I'd like to also on item K two as well, um bring up um uh page one fifteen and I'd like to put that after uh number six after A, put that in there.
Um number six.
Yeah, so if you look at item number six on the first page. Okay, and it's it's got A. Okay, law enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I want to put that after that under I want to put K after that before water and store.
The whole just personnel.
Uh yeah, which is page one one five, page one fifteen, there's no other way to identify it.
Items two and three under K. And pull that forward to after county law enforcement.
Right. In case he was here, I wanted to let him be able to actually.
It's yeah, anything else? Make a motion, we approve the agenda with the age of adding item one under public works. Striking number one under K personnel committee, uh community center. And the third is to move items two and three of personnel, community center up to after a honorable county law enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, oh, one thing I forgot to add on here too, which means bunch of workshops, so if you wanted to do that under the business or if you wanted to wait.
We can put it on your business, we just have the one with A FYI on one fifteen, so if you want. So we have a fourth item under ribbon number eight, new business. B, which is scheduling budget workshops. Second.
Second.
Any other comments? Seeing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Prove. Uh next item is our public forum. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinently city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium. Uh state your name and address and fill out a white form that's on the podium. Speakers will be recognized only once. The three minute time limit will be monitored by city staff and there will be a yellow card like this that will be held up thirty seconds before the three minute time limit. And the red card would be shown when it's time to stop. And with that, um those who would like to speak to public forum, you're more than welcome. I'd like to introduce center Liz Bolden with us tonight. Thanks for coming out. Uh if you have anything to say, that'd be a great time to say it or that's up to you.
Sure, I just, you want me to spill out a little? Uh so I'm state senator Liz Bolden, I just thank you for uh letting me be here with you tonight. I uh I'm grateful to now that we're out of our session, I'm able to be in district a little more often and so um we'll aim to be here as often as I can, but just wanted to introduce myself and uh make connections and know that I'm a resource um for you all and so if there's anything I can do uh for you, please let me know.
Thank you for coming. Everybody else would like to speak to public forum. Second and call for public forum. And third and final call for public forum. Should ask, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak at public forum? Okay. Seeing done, we'll close public forum at six forty, yeah? Hey, um in your packet there is a letter of uh that Sunny shared with us. From Heather Groby, owner of Chili's Restaurant. Has everybody had a chance to read the letter?
It's just my memo. It's just mine now.
Your memo, yes, okay. Heather, if there's anything you'd like to say uh addressing the letter?
I guess I'm not, I don't know what the letter says.
There's an opportunity for you to speak if you like, but you don't have to.
My name's Heather, I'm at Chili's and I am. My name is Heather, um I'm from Chili's and I'm looking um for a temporary release and uh your ordinance for noise. Um I'm looking to do um an outdoor event similar to what what I did for the grand opening as a parking lot party. As my um customer appreciation, I've had a lot of the community asking um to do something like this again. And I would like to annually have a customer appreciation to give back to to um to customers for for an event for them coming in. Um it's not something I would like to do all the time, I know I just asked for the grand opening, but it it it's a lot, it's expensive to do um. So I'm just looking for like one, I mean year, an annual customer appreciation, either being in the summer or the spring or the fall for something like this for our guests, the community to socialize, gather. I didn't fill out a gathering permit yet um. I would like it just similar, you know, an hour pass for a band to play, I think the ordinance is until eleven, so I would like it for the band to be able to play till midnight. I think that's it, I'm not quite sure of what the letter says, if any questions for me?
Do you have a question, do you? God, I'm sorry.
You're not asking for a permanent, it's just for the specific time.
Right.
Yeah, and and I would, you know, um I think it was great and and your other one was fantastic, I really enjoyed it and it was a great turnout and everything that happened for your grand opening and what goes on. Um I think that to allow you to do it in in September, after whatever you wanted to do that, uh September ninth would would be good, but what I would suggest is that when you plan on doing this next year, that you come to council again and do that without having just a permanent open do whatever, because we want to make sure that everybody is notified behind with your neighbors and that that that's going on and and we want it to run smooth like it did last time, and I think as long as we continue to do that, that makes sense, but each time you want, I think that it would be good for you to come and identify or let us know that that's what you're planning on doing.
Okay, how far in advance should I be popping in here? Because bands, like for next year, you have to book them out like a year in advance.
Uh well, if you have a date for whatever there is for a time next year, come to us and and bring that and we'll at least have it, we'll have it in our packet, we'll be able to approve it. You know, to do it that way, but that way at least we're aware of what's going on, we know what weekend is going to be, and I think we need to identify uh with the people that there are for the neighbors behind, just to make sure that that everything fits, okay? And and again, it's good neighbors, I think, for for everybody by doing it that way.
I did, um if it makes you feel any better, I did bolt my fanny around all the way up and around, personally knocked on every single door, handed out flyers if they weren't there, I left it on their doorstep or their door like as a uh invite, walk, you know, welcoming them and asking them to come on and walk down, up the one, like where all the new development, where it was all forming and then like all around the side there, I've hit every single house.
Yeah, no, no, like I said, it was it was fantastic, I really enjoyed it, I was there and and wanted to participate in that. And I think that that's something good to do, I think it's great to bring business into the city and for you too. You know, so that's what I'm saying, I'm I'm not against it at all, I just want want us to know every time you're going to do it instead of just arbitrarily. We're doing it this weekend so that we're aware of what's going on.
And September ninth date, correct me if I'm wrong, is because a band contacted you and said they had an availability.
Yeah.
So that's where that.
And it was the last minute, um I was reaching out for next year for a customer appreciation, I was going to wait till next year to do it. Um and they happened to say this fall, they could do it, they couldn't guarantee me for next year. One met up lady friend and it's getting married and moving to Arizona. Stone ladies anyways. So that was, it was last minute. Uh but it is, um I am looking for September nine.
Did we receive any complaints about the noise from anybody? Did anybody hear anything? Like Sunny, you never took calls or anything?
No. Yeah, and we walked, I mean, any garbage, I mean, I picked up more garbage even than our garbage around the area. Um I tried really being a good neighbor.
Well, I think you were great, that's why I said, I think it worked out well, I think everything was was cleaned up very well afterwards, the next day, I saw you working very hard to try to get that taken care of in the morning, so.
So is this, is this something that she has to come back for every time?
Yeah.
Or?
That's what he's asking for, yes, because.
I mean physically come back, could it be a phone call and then the council is then made aware that it's.
No, I think the council should approve it, if she has trouble this time, maybe we ain't going to want to give her a permit next time. You know, she wants to earn, keep earning uh rights to have them. You know, I mean, we shouldn't have to go to Jabba, it's pulling her permit back.
Sure.
If she earned it, you know.
Yeah.
Because if she has trouble this year, next year, we might think, or it gives a chance to talk about, right, exactly. Yeah, but I mean, she can come, you know, six months ahead of time.
I thought it was great.
Yeah.
It was a great time, it really was, I I just would hate to count the receipts afterwards, as much as always going on. It was a little bit creepy, but on a good side.
I think I'm anxious to approve the requested um deviation to the hours on September ninth.
Second.
Two, just to be clear, you're going from eleven to twelve.
Right, the DVA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then if the band stops at midnight and there's still people lingering outside until bar close at one. So am I covered in gold in there? Do you want to do the playlist? I will have, I will have the music seize at midnight, but sometimes it takes a lot to get.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, we're good last time, so keep it that same type of uh thing, because nobody complained.
The organist states um from which noise emanates sufficient volume to disturb the peace, so I think um the band stopping at midnight and first the bars open till one.
Yeah.
Can you okay?
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I I was there at the, before the show, or before the band started nine o'clock and uh everybody was younger than I was, so. That was fun, looked like they was having a great time.
So are we saying midnight or what?
No, we're saying midnight.
Just like it was last.
The band stops at midnight.
Any other comments? Seeing done, all those in favor?
Is there a second, I'm sorry, did I miss? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Carl's second.
Or Carlton, yeah.
Seeing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Ruth?
Okay, I have a couple more things to do to make sure that I'm for surely on the up and up on this. And I just fill out the gathering permit and pay the fee and I'm fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll follow up with a letter for you.
Okay, it's gonna come, thank you. Yep.
All right, next item is um law enforcement and there's a report. Packet sixty-six calls, eighteen traffic stops, one traffic enforcement, so.
I was just, I was just gonna look at this on the on the lift, it says, is that what should be done um through um our stuff or is that with the sheriff would do the lift?
I think that's for them to decide.
So who decides that, the sheriff decides?
Through them, they're all first responders, police are first responders.
I just didn't know, I saw that and I was just thinking with the number of first responders we have.
Yeah. Well, let the professionals decide. They don't think we should get involved.
Okay, next item is the contractor do over the sheriff. There's a letter in your packet. Increase with the twenty-four, twenty twenty-five contract. It ends in twenty twenty-three, this contract was fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and the new contract is a six percent increase. He one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, twenty twenty-four. It's sixty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, uh three percent increase for twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the contract for uh twenty-four and twenty-five.
Second. Second, Jim, Jim? Any comments?
Is there a chance to increase hours each year just after we sign this, is there a chance to negotiate hours, you know, when we do our yearly in January? That's kind of when we do our contracts and that.
So this with the two-year contract, it probably has to be written into this contract.
Okay, right.
I know it jumps.
Yeah, it's it's understanding how much we're going to grow in the next two years, I'm just wondering, I'm just hoping that that will stay enough coverage, you know what I'm saying? So that would be my, do you have any thoughts? You have any thoughts on that if we're?
I didn't quite understand it.
So that, or we're approving a contract for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Right.
Um so our city could grow significantly in the next two years, would that be enough?
If we ran into a problem, sure, they'd negotiate.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that something that we can negotiate?
Well, that's come up in the past, contract. We've asked for other help on ordinance violations, et cetera, that isn't really included.
We've been able to.
They haven't really been willing to do that type of work. But I think it's yeah, but that's because we were expanding the scope of what, I think what you're saying is just more law enforcement.
Hours and we would pay for that, you know, negotiate the contract.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't really, yeah, of course you can, it doesn't really need to be in this contract.
Okay.
They, part of the problem is law enforcement staffing is way down.
Right.
All throughout greater Minnesota, way down, so they might not be able to service that, but you can always negotiate.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we say that.
I do think it's a very point that I think that's something to look at.
Yeah, I think a two-year contract for something like this is the longest you want to go for that. That that reason, I mean, you could have a reduction in your services too.
Right, right.
If if you look at page thirteen on number fourteen on the way down there, it kind of said the parties, you know, this country agreed to meet during this period to contact any request of any party party purpose discussing the improvements and the implementation of the contract, so I think that that gives us enough leeway to be able to to talk to them if we needed to do that.
I mean, you have to understand that they're under no obligation to provide you the services. So, you know, you you can negotiate with them, but you have to ask and they have to agree, and it costs.
It's costly. Obviously.
You do want to always negotiate, be able to negotiate, and I think, I mean, they were reasonable when we asked previously, I think we wanted them to do civil standby was the issue when we were doing a building enforcement issue and they didn't want to do that. That was that what the scope was. And we went to the point of saying, well, we'll pay extra for that, that's fine, and then this was before Sunny's time, it's years and years ago, so they can find a change in the city of Yoda, I represent them too, they also use, I'm the county sheriff and we've had interactions with them and that. So yes, I I don't, I know you can approve it, you can always ask for more.
Yeah.
And pay more.
Perfect.
There's one thing, I'm sorry, um there's one thing I noticed in the in the earlier contract and now I see it's in on page thirteen at the top. It's it's referencing um a safety committee. And don't remember that, yeah, it is.
Uh safety committee.
At the very top line.
Well, thirteen, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Sorry, it's the time of this patrol services shall be determined by agreement between the municipality through its safety committee and the sheriff.
Um I think that would be something we may want to review, I don't think it's a federal contract, we should get a clarification of what that is.
Yeah, keep in mind, this is a standard contract that you use for all the cities and counties that you have, so.
And they're here an hour and a half.
And and I think the crowd just said that right as he was talking to me, is that that could be the council and the safety, because if they could be brought to us.
If we don't have a safety committee, it's council that answers.
And we would know if there's issues happening at different times. You know, or you know, if you have the effectiveness of the coverage that, you know, if stuff was getting broken into at night, maybe we want to have more coverage at night than we do during the day of what's going on, so.
Any other comments? Seeing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, we're gonna bring ahead items two and three for uh action item council clarification of effective resignation date for a Minsky. So the anything in our package?
No, the only thing that there was is just that one page, which is page one one five.
And that was just um council all received emails, the original announcement and under revision, the announcement and from a staff standpoint, I'm just looking for clarity on what council wants that to be, because the, excuse me. As you all know, the city administrator is not a manager, um so I have no authority over hiring or firing or or those kind of things, that is council decision. And council ultimately is responsible for those. Um and the policy actually, again, because it's dated free city administrator, has much of the authority going to the mayor, um personnel committee.
Well, generally, I mean, I've given advice to the city, maybe we crossed our lines a bit on this, but I don't think the council should be accepting resignations by vote. There's reasons for that, you know, but I've advised you guys in the past, I think you stop doing that. Um you'd want to send an acknowledgement of resignations, if there's samples, I've I've looked through our files, we had samples in the past, we sent an email, I think you sent two emails in this case that basically are the same thing, you know, in substance, cover what's in the letter, the letter is a very short letter, it's about basically a two-sentence, three-sentence letter. Um so you've effectively accepted a resignation, I guess I'm not sure what whether it matters if it's one day different at this point. So to me, it's it's
It's different.
Two days difference.
On the nineteenth to the twentieth.
Yeah, I mean, I think once I was explaining this to James, we had a conversation about it, but basically when somebody resigns and you accept the resignation, they can't change the date. The city could allow them to change the date, in most cities, the administrator wouldn't do that, not the council directly, but um you know, it's unique facts, obviously, so I the council could vote in this case, not to accept the resignation, but to pick the date of the resignation, I think that's what you're asking, right?
That's what I'm asking, just which date am I using? It doesn't make a dollar, uh it doesn't make a difference in terms of dollars, because it's using um PTO, so.
Yeah, so you could just pick a date or you could just defer to Sunny to pick a date, if it doesn't really make any difference, I think that's fine, that's fine, so. I I just make a motion, I think, except the date is his final date that he that he selected, I think is what tomorrow.
By the revision, his first one was the nineteen yesterday.
Yep.
And then the revision was for tomorrow. Using PTOs today and tomorrow.
Yes, I, I wrote I made the motion that we accept as revised.
I'll second that.
Comments regarding that? I guess I'm of the opinion that uh I recognize that we received the letter and it had an official date on it of January the nineteenth. And uh coming back and coming back for a two-day extension, you're right, it doesn't affect me because now he's asked for a PTO, but at the same time in the past, we've had the same situation where people would send a letter of resignation in and then ask for an extension. In the previous case, we did not allow that. You said it was one date, so that's what the council approved, you didn't accept the second date. So.
I think wasn't the previous instance, this was years ago, but wasn't it they resigned and then unresigned and then re-resigned, that's what I remember. Yeah, it wasn't a two-year mint, it was a resign. Yeah.
And my credit says, sir, well, you didn't, it's just not that.
Yeah, I mean, well, whatever, I mean yeah, I I don't, I mean, honestly, I was telling Sunny, we discussed it a bit, I just you know, it you can, you can do whatever you want here, I mean, that would, this would say it's setting a precedent, I mean, I was giving the examples of you know, if if the city needs extra days of employment and somebody resigns, you could voluntarily ask them, would you extend it? And they might agree to that, or opposite, they're going out of town with their family or whatever and you know, city, would you let me change my, what I already wrote to you, would you let me move it up two days and you could just accept that. So on a case-by-case basis, you might, you might change it, and it's not uncommon, I don't think, to change the date after it's submitted.
Yeah, if you look at the way LMC looks at it, if you put in a resignation, anytime up to that date of resignation, you can change that or rescind it by what LMC says.
Right.
You know, and so if that would be the case, and and again, I'm just following LMC's.
You know, I mean, I looked at their guide too, I don't read it that way, we've never advised our clients like like that, we we think once you make the resignation, it's not the employee's right to change it at that point, if you've sent the acknowledgement. See, if you don't send the acknowledgement, then you're in the quandary of was it actually accepted, the resignation formally accepted by the city and that. Was it actually accepted, the resignation formally accepted by the city? And that. That brings up a lot of issues, but I think in this case it was accepted. So. That's my view of it. Um, that's how we've always advised. I did talk to our labor attorney about this and he confirmed that, so. Um, I could look into it more and email you if you want.
No, I'm just going by what LMC says and, you know, I mean, we, we, we put a lot of emphasis and, and. As we belong to the LMC and pay for them all the time for what there is, I just, I believe that we should. You know, use them also, you know, in that regard, that's a change and something different.
I will look into it. I am not familiar with that. I mean, I'm familiar with the issue and I know how we had, we advise on it, that there's no. Employee right to change your resignation. And we universally kind of advised on that to all of our clients. I did check with our head, head labor attorney on it, but I will take a look.
I guess. To my, my question would be. Are we considering this a resignation or retirement? I heard it was, I understood as a retirement.
There's no, I don't know. Retirement wasn't in the letter. When it's a resignation, it was just. Personal endeavors.
Yeah.
It was a resignation.
Was it a resignation?
Yeah.
So I understood.
He might have told you that or, you know, something.
Yeah.
Than one, but. Um, and, um, councillor Phillips, if I could just add, do you, do you know what that reference is from?
Uh, no, I'll get that to you.
Okay.
It was in the handbook, that's why it'll be.
Yeah, I mean, I had emailed a section of the LMC handbook that I felt said the opposite of that, but I can, I'll send it back out, read it now. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure it matters for this particular. Issue. I mean, I'm not, I think we're kind of talking a lot about a two days.
I think I used PTO. My, my only concern, and I understand what everybody's saying too, and, uh. My only concern is, is, is a precedent and maybe we need to have that clarified for succinctly in our personnel policy and maybe it's there already, but, uh. And I did not read the personnel policy myself, but. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the, uh. Corey's, uh, last day with the city this January or June twenty-first. End of day.
I.
Seeing none, seeing aye?
Aye.
Oh's?
Thank you.
Appreciate Corey being with us as long as he did and wish him the best going forward.
Right.
All right, next item was, um. Electrical quote.
We had some other things. Did you want to go over anything else, Jim, on stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's all part of it. So. Under, under the personnel. Okay, so there's, there's a number of things under, under personnel. Um, there, there's one thing that.
Agenda.
Yeah, it is. It's on one one five.
It was actually number one. What we, what we eliminated was the closed session.
Right, yeah, this is not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did too. I thought you were striking the whole line as well.
No.
I, that's the motion we had on our agenda.
The motion was to strike the close.
Okay.
So to go over those, the items on one one five. Um, and then there's, there's one that's on the list that. Okay, um, so the first one is employee probation period. And Personnel Committee met and talked about this. And I thought it would be good. For council to weigh in on it. Right now, the probationary period is six months. And within that probationary period now. They don't get paid holidays if a paid holiday falls within that period. Um. Raises don't happen within that period. Um. And let's see, what was the other thing? I think that, um. Time. I think those, those are the main ones. So what I would like to propose. Is number one, because I think six months is a long time. And if there's, if there's a need to extend it, I would say that, that's a different thing. Because my feeling is if there's a paid holiday that all city workers are off. A federal paid holiday or state paid holiday, they should be able to take a paid holiday. Whether they're on probation or not. Because like I say, six months is a long time. Um. And I al, I believe the same thing for the cost of living raises. You know, if, if, whether they're probationary or not, they should get the cost of living, not the merit. Because we, we have a certain amount for merit, a certain amount for cost of living. And. Yeah, those are the main items on that one.
Yeah, and this was also when we went back to probation, um, that there was for John, who was a part-time employee and worked part-time. And approved himself part-time, but when he went to full-time, he was put back on probationary period again. And you would think that the part-time that he had and the work that he did should have proved himself. That we wanted to hire him to be a full-time employee. So that's where it kind of brought up that probationary period situation. You know, that, you know, I don't know how to write that in a policy, but. If, if we look at the three months with an ability to extend it further if we need. Then we've got that option to go for a longer period if they don't hold up to what they need to do in that three-month period. And I think that's what we had discussed.
Well, I just pointed clarification for John. He, he was seasonal first and then part-time three months and then went to full-time and had. So I did. Give credit for those three months of part-time so that his, his. Um. Probationary period followed policy and going six months, but it was three months of part-time, three months of.
Yeah, but there was no break in it, was there, Sonny?
No.
From when it was seasonal, that part-time.
Well, seasonal doesn't earn.
No, no, I, I know, but I'm, I'm saying just for probation purposes.
No break. When.
He went from probation. Part-time and then full-time.
And then. Yes. Um, and then if I could just add to, um. Respectfully, um, the other thing that they wanted to, to be clear on was paid holidays. Making sure that those, regardless of whether it's in the probationary period or not. That's something that's set by policy beyond the control of really any employee. That's something we determine. Um. Were closed, so.
Are we determined as in council? Is that what you're saying?
Council in terms of, of adopting the personnel policy. And what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're asking for is. These kind of spot corrections into the existing policy as we revise the policy.
Yes, yes, because these are, all of these are policy. And when you really think about it, and then one is actually. I mean, the, they could all fall under the probationary period policy. Uh. You could also break them out, but yeah, they are all spot policy changes.
And, and, and this is not seasonal. We're not talking about seasonal people at all because we offer them no benefits when they become.
Right.
I'd like to see, you know, like thirty days, they'd be on the job thirty days before they got a paid holiday. You know, if they started on Monday and holidays, one day, I don't think that you get paid. I think they had to have to work thirty days and then, you know, if they're on probation, six months. And near everybody, they gotta take off. Everybody else is gone, so they gotta take off, they gotta get paid.
Right.
I agree with that. After thirty days, you know, being as hard at employment is to find, you know, six months is a long time.
Yes.
You know, you're likely to get somebody on the job two months, but long six.
Right. And again, it's, it's up for discussion, so.
Yeah, I think.
Your, your suggestion is after thirty days, if they're on probation.
They get a paid holiday.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess my feeling is, uh, I can see three months, um, probation, um. Paid holidays, cost of living raise, um. You know, to me, that's what probation is for, identify the character of the person, the ability to. Be on time, follow workload, uh, directions now. You know, there's, I think there's still some benefit of a probation period and, uh, once they become full-time employers, then I think that's. Worth the paid city holidays and the cost of living raise, but. I can see a three-month probationary period.
Subject to, we talked about.
If, if, if needed to be and they weren't working out quite how well, we could extend it to six months if we needed to. To have that ability to do that.
That's our policy. To repeat probation if you want. That's already in the personnel policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cost of living wages usually are once, we would do that once a year. So you're just saying if they got hired in. And we usually, we, we do that in January. Or no, when we do our budget.
Well, we said it in our budget dispositions for an effective date during where it was on the call.
Right. So I don't know what the thirty-three or what three months versus six months versus, you know what I mean? Because that's done yearly. So what, I guess, that's the only question.
The probation is from their date of hire.
Right.
That's when that clock starts ticking. As opposed to, so like if somebody started, for example, and correct me if I'm wrong, started in, say, October.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're gonna still be on probation.
When we do that in January.
But, yeah, the COLA will still kick in on January one, based on whatever council decides. But the merit piece is still going to be, um. Not January one, but more likely their anniversary date. But having said that, also, um. The policy does call for regular performance reviews. So like the thirty-day probationary period would be a. A, a threshold point where you do. And then if you had an extension, then it would go to sixty days, um. And then the annual, of course. And I know. For, for, I'm gonna pick on you, Mary, but for Mary, I mean, I've set her up. I'm doing reviews at thirty, sixty. And.
So you're doing every thirty days during probation.
Which I think is, is fair, yeah. I think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah, because, because I mean, if you, if you really look at it, if you put it in perspective, let's say someone was hired in October. Then you've got Thanksgiving and let's say they're doing a knockout job. Thanksgiving, they don't get a paid holiday. Christmas, they don't get a paid holiday. New Year's, they don't get a paid holiday.
I like the holiday part. I think that that's, makes sense. I just don't know about, yeah, I was just curious about the. After the things that.
Yeah, and right now, given, um, because she's part-time. Those holidays, for example, yes, they live a holiday, but obviously Renee has gone this week and I'm adjusting her hours so that. You know, she still isn't lacking any of the hours that, that we offered her at, so. And so there's still that flexibility for seasonal people and for part-time.
So do you guys?
So the cost, just to clarify, so the cost of living increase, that would only occur in case of a person that was on probation was here on January one.
Any employee that's here on January one.
Was qualified for the COLA for that.
Right, yeah.
Whether they're on probation or not. Whether they're on probation or not. So they just strike that, yeah. So then do you suggest kind of as a committee, who's on the personnel committee right now? Jim? Just you?
Oh, and me.
Then you, okay. So then do you kind of like what planning and zoning is doing? Are you just going to go through it and then bring it to us, the whole? Is that what you're, what you're suggesting? I mean, I would, I would like, that would be helpful if you, if you went through it and kind of. Edited it and then we were to vote on it as a whole instead of this.
And the script.
Right, right, because it's hard to know.
It would be.
We couldn't do anything tonight, for example. Because doesn't it have to, for a policy, doesn't it have to be, isn't there?
I, I.
Well, my, my promise to staff. Was that before it came to council, because we are revising. For a year. But, um, I'm, I'm getting closer and I, and I've shared the, the, uh, template, if you will, with, with. Um, personnel committee members. Um, but my promise to staff was that before it comes to council. I would share with them what was. What we were thinking.
So in other words, the policy is until, today we have a policy.
We have a policy.
So until the policies change, looking at the new public works person that we're hiring. Post-interviewing, so that person would still follow the current policy rules very much. And we're not really in a position to make those changes here this evening until the policy is updated and the wording reflects that.
And that.
We can make this. I think we can make the decision and then we update the policy according to the decision. And then we just approve the wording of the policy. Correct? Because these, these are decisions within, are for changing a policy.
Mike, what are your thoughts on that?
And I will just say one more thing if I could before my answers, um. Uh, keep in mind that the existing policy that you have. Is pre-city administrator. So much of, you know, how it gets.
That's what I was gonna say. I read the policy today. I hadn't read it, I mean, a long time and it doesn't really fit because you have an administrator. Typically. So the old policy was written so that, because there was just a clerk, it was just. For your name before Gerald, no, Sandy, Sandy was here for council. So, yeah. So, but they generally, you, you, you know, part of this is your ordinance. I don't, I think your ordinance needs to be updated because your ordinance doesn't. List that administrator position, list clerk position. And then I think that personnel policy needs to be updated to reflect the administrator's position. Because generally speaking. You know, I was talking to Jim a little bit about this. I was like, well, the administrator should really be doing this, but then I didn't realize that the policy hadn't been updated to fit. So you've got a contradictory, you've got policy saying one thing and then the city in practice probably thinking you should be doing something else.
Yeah.
So it needs to get looked at just as a general. Construct and a general project, I think. And then the ordinance, if you're going to employ a city administrator, I think your ordinance needs to reflect that. Instead of just the clerk. And so that would be a second thing. And. I, I'm gonna go back and look. Uh, I think we drafted a memo on this. I think the former attorney Chelsea at our firm had drafted a long memorandum about this and done some work on it. I, I just, what happened was she left our firm and then. The decision wasn't made to get the administrator right away and then, so I think we need to do a little bit more digging, digging that stuff up and sort of cleaning it up a little bit, just generally. I mean, a lot of the stuff you guys are talking about could be possibly addressed, um, by an updated policy, I think. And, and things like the, are you gonna change the resignation date kind of issue like? You know? I don't.
So the question is, Chance or Jim's question is whether or not we can make any changes to your motion.
Well.
You can, but the, you can.
I mean, you can, but you should, shouldn't. You should have the adopted policy in the, in the. I mean, unless you're gonna verbatim read into the record what you're gonna change. Um, which you could do. I mean, if it's a one-sentence change, you could say, I picked a motion to amend the personnel policy. In section whatever, whatever, to add the following sentence. And then I think you could effectuate a change to the personnel policy that way because it's not an ordinance. It doesn't have to be, I mean, it's. You know. I'm just not sure if it's gonna be detailed amendment. I, I think you need to really, real, legally, could you? Yes. Realistically, you probably. Amendment, put it in the package. So that's my, I do sense, I, so.
Is there, I mean, if we, if we wait a month, if you guys bring it back and really put in the wording you want and then we adopt it next month. Could we go back and say, if somebody gets hired by the fourth of July, could we go back and say we have.
You're retracting.
Could we pay that person for the fourth? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I guess my concern is just so we don't let it sit.
Yeah.
You know, is. You know, is. Make it. Make our decision. Go back, edit the policy, bring the policy back to say, okay. Are you guys good with this policy? But yet, I mean, we still have it that, okay, we know. What we'll say that our probationary period is three months. So make that decision, but. Then we. We um, approve the policy wording. At a later. Meeting. You know what I'm saying? Policy change according to what we approve. Cause otherwise, we're making the policy change. That isn't. I mean, it's it's kind of chicken and egg, whichever.
Well, okay, so. So for the purposes of tonight's discussion, maybe it's just kind of a straw poll kind of getting.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was looking for, and I wanna put a date on it, I wanna put a date on it that we. The policy will be here for. For us to look at. And it it's done. You know, I I don't want it to lag.
Cause it's very important, we've got a public works. No, that's. Boy, we're gonna hire one, it's gonna meet, there's gonna be a lot of holidays, what he had missed, went sad. Might affect, is the job market really stressful?
I think you were talking too about straw poll and and I agree with what you're saying, Carl. Um, there's some other um, issues that we wanted to look at for straw poll as well, and another one was with dealing with office hours, right, Jim?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do first is just, just this one.
Okay.
Let's get up the poll on this, I I don't wanna move until we have a decision on what we're going to do with this one. So our.
Straw poll is not an official motion. And. What the actual policy comes back and the wording is what we'll vote on. For motion, so there, there could be some changes there, I don't know what they would do, but the point is that. Straw poll is is a, is a, is a consensus. But doesn't mean it's fast.
Right, and again, you know. I I like to think my word means something, so I wanna make sure that. That's at staff meeting next week, then.
So what have to? What are you gonna do to fix the policy then? Like, are you gonna mark it up? Or redraft it, or do you want a lawyer to do that?
I I would say we we redraft.
First and see how it it looks, okay, and then if we need to give it to you, Mike, we can, but.
I I won't be doing it personally, all I'll say is. If you wanna take a crack at it, redo what you think you wanna do and then send it to us to review, do it at least a week.
Yep.
Oh, no, we'll give you at least, at least.
Cause I have two weeks for it.
And and I will say, as Sonny mentioned, we're, we're going through all those. All the policies and and to Mike's point, we have to. You know, because we have a city administrator, um, so.
And we are, we are using the. League's template and. And I gotta believe that there, the league has enough faturaries, both HR and and uh. That that's been vetted, but I don't have a problem if council wants to run it past him too, but I I do want this. To go before staff or feedback. Before it comes to council, so yeah.
We're not using verbiage, we're putting ours into their template, it's a good template, so what I, what I'm hearing then. Is. If we have a staff join between now and then.
Next week, next Wednesday is staff.
Yeah, so what are we gonna do, are we saying we're leaving the policy as it is until next council meeting?
Well, we could always make something retroactive if it comes to a change of what's going on, so.
I think it's. It's it's a little bit chicken and egg, but all of a sudden we have a couple paragraphs. Hanging out here in midair, it doesn't belong to any place, because we haven't finished the policy, it doesn't apply to our current policy. So we have these two paragraphs or three paragraphs, they're just kind of. In limbo, so. Till we get the new policy under administrator complete. And then obviously everybody had the chance staff and council to go through it and make those changes, so I. I just think like we're, we're making things happen too fast and unofficially making them happen.
Yeah. Well, and and I'm not saying official, but if if we think about it, what happens? Let's say, cause I I want, I wanna put dates on it, I wanna see this at the next council meeting, so we hire somebody in the next two weeks. Are we then going to? Put it in the verbiage in the policy? That if they're hired within X weeks or X days, whatever it is of this policy change, we go retro. So instead of them being a six-month probation or a three. Or do we, you know, what I'm saying, because we need to know that, put it in the policy too.
But you can still put in, hire an employee under the current policy.
And then make.
And then, you know. Because adopting the new policy is gonna be. Lesser, not more restrictive. Right, so we would.
Okay. Okay, so. And when I'm here, we're gonna redraft the policy. Include what we want, we're gonna bring it back to the next council meeting.
I think that's. Cleanest way to make it happen.
I I wouldn't advise amending a policy without the policy. In the packet, so don't do it tonight, but yeah, I mean, if you can do it by, if you can do it by next meeting, that might be. A big task, I mean, it's, it's a long, I mean, I was looking at it today, it's not.
We're talking about abandoning the current policy.
Right.
Right, so. At the risk of having another meeting, it's still cutting the new employee, we don't know when that is, when that person's able to start. So we've got a floating date out there of effectiveness, but sometime before that. Person is officially accepts and starts on his date, that person's date. Um, maybe we can have it. A proposal sent out to the council and the current policy. With whatever we're gonna come up here with the consensus, it sounds like you've got something else you wanna discuss. And just have a very short meeting, make sure it's in place. Before that person starts.
So you're thinking less than a month to do that?
Depends upon what we have for our person.
Well, Monday, next Monday is the cut-up, is the deadline for applications. So then I expect that Kane and I will be looking through those scoring, I'm gonna setting up interviews as quickly as we can. Um. This point, I don't have any response, so. Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, this deadline's not here, right? The half glass, half full, um. So, um.
We'll be right on our next council day.
Right, and the other thing is that I was gonna mention both, cause I was working with um, on a development project. Laying out timelines and stuff. In both July and August, there is very little turnaround between. Um, planning and zoning on the second Thursday and council meeting again on the third. Tuesday, so there's only like a five-day turnaround, um. So what I'm saying is council meetings are really fast for the next two months.
July eighteenth, August sixteenth.
Then we'll work on P and Z to make sure that they have the minutes that are handed over quick.
So we're good on this one, right?
So we have, we have a consensus on paid holidays. Cost of living increase if it's over the first of the year. And the probationary period timeline.
Yes.
Is what?
Move to six if they need, we can, we can. But three months.
But the thirty-day was getting a paid holiday, so they have to be here at least thirty days to get a paid holiday. Is what Carl's.
So just so unclear, the first revision, just gonna include those three things, or is it gonna be a full-on? More substantive, yeah, okay.
Yeah, more discussion items here.
Got it, oh, I see, I see, I'm sorry, jumping the gun.
Is there anything else that would affect? Probation period that you wanna discuss? You have a list here, but I want.
Yeah.
They can talk about some of these things, but I want.
Yeah, these, these bulleted, just the bulleted under one are under probation. Okay. So are we good to move to the number two?
Yeah.
Their heads are on consensus.
Okay, so number two, I wanna put this out there. Um, for us to talk about employee hours. I wanna make the proposal and and I'd like counsel to talk about it is. Have. The city's hours eight to five. Monday through Friday, that would be city hall and public works, I know some public works start at seven, so we could say public work seven to five. But so we have consistent hours. And we always have people here, that's not to say, and and this again is is policy, that's not to say. That I know they they do the half-days on Fridays. And that's not to say they couldn't do some type of a rotation for half-days. But I, to me, I think it's, it's critical that we have somebody here. And there. During normal business hours.
And and for going one step further off of that. Have somebody that's visible in the office downstairs. Instead of having a sign that says ring bell for service. You know, I've heard a lot of comments from people saying they walk in, the office is dark. And they see ring bell for service and and they would expect to have somebody that should be there, so.
And. Just a couple of points that I would, I would make is, it is dark, I mean, we can turn the office light on, but. It it is dark in there too, because you've got two lights that are. Dying in the hallway too, so it is literally dark in there. Um, in that foyer or stuff, um, I know one of the things that we've, um. We've been, Renee and I have been monitoring too, because we're on this listserv, um, that one of the things that's. That's important and we can, I'm. I'm supportive of of more coverage, but I'm also, um. Think a lot of, a lot of the cities in this area do have, um. Personal days on Friday, and I know up in the metro, a lot of them have gone to four-day weekends or four-day weeks. Especially in the winter, um, so they kind of monitor their heating kind of thing too, so. Um, the other, the other thing is core hours, when, when the office is open to everyone. But allowing for a. Kind of a. Like in teachers have, um, you know, uh, what do they call those?
Workshop.
Days, yes, workshop kind of times where they're still working, but it's, it's uninterrupted time. For them to catch up and stuff, so there are some, um. Things, I I appreciate that, but this, this one, I definitely would want staff way in as well.
And and again, um, keep in mind that we have another temporary position that we've approved. That's open, that has not been filled, and so. Having that person maybe come in and work till Mary comes in. You know, could be a way to do it, that you would have somebody that's there that would be able to, to take care of it, so. I think we have. Um. An ability to do it that's already in our budget right now without having to restructure the budget for next year, okay, and so.
And the other thing I'll add too, even in terms of public works, you know, having those extended, you know, the hours go till five. Will that possibly cut down on comp time, let's say something breaks? You know, then that's, that's an on-call, but if if we extend it, say it's, say it's seven to five. They have. They've got enough staff, they cover and and, you know, they stagger the the start times and end times. To get us staffed within those hours.
Especially with a project coming up with the water and sewer, the, you know, it would cover those extra hours.
Yeah, and. And so the other thing, and and that's why I say eight to five, and you know. Because I I, let's be truthful, we. We see Sonny working all hours. That's not sustainable, I mean, we. And it goes into our next item, I mean, we got our agenda Sunday at.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, that's not sustainable, that's why I'm saying, set hours, set hours, no working from home, that would be the exception. You know, because I know there's issues, we had that before, issues with internet connection. So I'm putting this out there.
Yeah, with the packet too, the the, we requested here for a few months to be able to have the packet done on Fridays. So that we could turn around and have the weekend to review them. You know, to make sure they're in in our our cobbies, you know. Um, and it, it's, it hasn't changed, but I would, I would like to see that, forget on Friday afternoon, let's.
Let's jump back to the office hours, I think that. You know, the reason it's seven to four now is, was our residents' request. They wanted to be coming in here before they go to work seven o'clock, and so that's why we have, that's why we started seven for a lot of years. And that was, the residents wanted to stop or wanted to come in now, that's, they wanted it better, the feeling was, and the comments we got from the residents, that they'd rather come early in the morning than. Come in at four to five. And having worked a lot of Friday mornings myself. And Jim, you probably know this as well, um, you might get two phone calls and one person walking in. There's not much, there's phone calls, I mean, there's other things going on, but. As far as interaction with the residents on Friday morning. Uh, it's, it's pretty thin. Um, importance of being here.
We did made city hall seven to four. By days of the week, you know. I mean, there ain't no saying, it's gotta be eight to five, it could be seven to four, you know?
And that's fine, I didn't know this feedback, so.
About the meeting, like, our staff also has to be at these meetings though, so that's part of why we, isn't that part of where their hours go?
Um, no, because they work seven to four.
And then Fridays.
That, so that's. Four times nine is thirty-six, so those are nine-hour days and then the four hours made it forty for the week.
And then the extra meetings are.
Meetings are comp hours.
I would, I would just hate to go back to eight o'clock and start getting complaints about.
Seven, I just want.
It's the first time I heard about that, okay, so.
Exactly, I just want those standard hours. Um, and and I don't think we need a half a day on Friday, I think that should be a rotation, you know, work, working in amongst the work. You know, so we have more coverage. During the week.
Well, I think for employee hours, I think we need to have city staff come back after talking to staff. Give us some input from the council, to the council.
I do worry that. Taking that away, I mean, that's a pretty nice. Perk and jobs are. There's a lot of. Lot of jobs open out there, so I do worry if we took away something like that, that. That may affect staff. Definitely, I feel like it might affect there.
Well, you know, as I look at it, you could also rotate and and instead of having Friday, have somebody have a Monday.
Well, I get.
So you'd still be able to play with.
My big complaint is that people say offices close Friday afternoon and we got Sonny here till twelve o'clock at night. You know, people complain, they drive by here, they see Sonny and they're working. They see her at ten o'clock, they see her at eleven o'clock, you know?
Why is that a complaint, she's a, she's a salaried employee, she's not an hourly employee.
You tell the citizens aren't open to that. That's what I hear, I'm just telling you.
Okay, can we have city staff? Take your comments into consideration and come back in July.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that, next item.
Um, it's just a deadline, go ahead. No, I was just gonna say for the deadline and and I'd like to have it set that, that we do get our agendas on Friday. So that we have the weekend to go over them and and, um. No late items that there are that are put on our itinerary the night before, because I think it makes it tougher for us to look at and make a decision.
Or the day of.
Or the day of.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, so late things coming in, it's not fair to Sonny and Renee. And, and it's equally not fair to the council. Especially if we have to take action on things and we get it the day of or the day before, you know? We need time to research things. The day of or the day before, you know, we need time to research things.
Seems to me like back last time I was on council, we said it that it had to be in my Thursday night to get on.
Thursday noon, I think, what would you?
Tuesday.
Yeah, so we've got that set, that's worked pretty good from that point, and I think people are. Trying to hold it at, it's just getting the packet out is is what the delays.
Well, I don't, I I think there's more than that, though, I think it, the deadline isn't always being met in terms of getting things in.
Yeah, and that's difficult for water and sewer, because we have our meeting on Tuesday. So we're always late with our minutes, you know, we try Wednesday or Thursday morning at the latest with our. With our minutes or with the input of the line items that go into the agenda, which. So far, Joe usually provides those with anything related to the subject. Uh, sewer project, and then I add a couple motions, if any motions that come out of uh council or committee meetings, so.
I will say.
I think the dates are there, we just need to continue to work to make it happen.
I did spring for a program. That will allow me to to put things. In place prior to merging them all together into a PDF and coming out with these numbered pages, so. It's it's not like I'm waiting for everything to come in, to be able to run it. All together, I can I can manipulate those kind of things so that it. So give me one more chance to.
No, it it's just, you know, it's just something that we've all talked about, and it's, we gotta, we gotta change it.
And and quite honestly, nobody probably beats theirself up more than me on that. Noted.
Next item.
So let's see, number four was about filling permanent position vacancies. So. Case in point, um, filling Cory's position. I would like, from a personnel committee standpoint, I would like to see. That be able to happen without coming to get the approval from council to fill that. Just let them go ahead and fill it.
Yeah, and I think the other thing too, and I don't know.
The ultimate, yeah, and I and I believe um, because this is a. A recurring thing. But again, I don't have the authority to hire unless council gives me that. And this is a position with Public Works that I wouldn't make the offer letter without. Um, Kane weighing in and and deferring to his expertise on that. But I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, allow to make the hire, make it happen, get that process going.
Especially if it's a filling of vacancies, you have a position that's already been there.
And you, and you did that. As soon as Cory gave his resignation. You had posted that next question, so it did take place.
Yeah, we were just making sure that that it was working smoothly, okay, in the past, it's been some issues that we have.
And to Sunny's point, that, you know, she can't hire unless she comes back to council, that's the piece, you know. Allow that to move without council saying, yep, go ahead. And and get that higher, because otherwise we lose a month in there.
And we lose a guy, because he needs to have money that's not working during the time, so.
And obviously, I'm going to do that if council proves that. Stay within the budget, since that's, that's what you're gonna hold me accountable for as well, and I'm gonna hold kind of um. Gain accountable for it as well.
So this one is act, you know, asking for approval to be able to do that, hire a backfill without coming back to council. Right? Interview and and hire. So otherwise, we're gonna, and we just had a council meeting, then we lose a month.
And in the past, you've had special meetings too. Approve a hiring, takes twenty minutes, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, but.
Instead of waiting till the monthly meeting, so that can happen too.
But but do we have to, you know, is there a reason? Even do that if it's a backfill?
I think there. The core way their organization is is structured with the city administrator, we have to do that. The council has to approve it.
That's the difference largely between city administrator and city manager.
So Mike, does the council have to approve it if we have a city administrator, if it's a backfill, recurrent position?
Well, it depends what's in your code, and you don't have anything in your code about the city administrator, but I think, no, I mean. The general, Sunny just stated the general rule, like the city manager and one only larger cities typically have managers.
Right.
He has, he could just hire a new police chief, and they did that when the police chief resigned, he just hired. And sent him out to the city council and said, I've hired this person. The administrator in all the cities I work in cannot hire and fire people, the the city council has to approve those.
So then we can.
Yeah, so I could look into it, but I I've never heard of that, I don't think.
Okay, we we can start the process like it's already had started, so, okay. Um, skip number five for, that's not personnel, we'll grab that at at the end, six, a cell phone. Um, we talked about that one, Sunny, at the Personnel Committee, cell phone for seasonal employees. You know, there was an ask for that, was it?
And I was not in favor of that.
So, bringing it to council, because right now they they would have to use their own cell phone.
Well, they all have it with them anyway, I mean, there isn't, there is the seasonal employee that's a kid that doesn't have a phone.
Understand why a a person who owns loans needs a phone.
Well, if you needed them, find somebody or whatever that was out on the job, saying, okay, I need to have you put there, removed in this other place. You have to find a way to contact them when they're out and about instead of, you know.
How how old are our seasonal employees?
Fifteen and sixteen.
And do you, have you ever had a job where you have to carry around two phones?
We weren't, we weren't saying a phone, they were getting money for the phone, and we're saying. So so we're saying for seasonal employees, no, because every kid's got a phone anyway, okay? It's unlimited talk time, so it's not gonna cost them anything.
Yeah, this is, this is not cell phones themselves, this is a cellphone reimbursement. Which is not. Full-time people afforded that.
That's right.
But.
It's a not seasonal.
So.
So are we all agreeing?
Yeah, we currently were getting that, but we overlooked it, no, they weren't, okay.
Not seasonal, others are.
Right, but why are we bringing this up if nobody's getting it? I'm confused.
And and we we can't make that decision. Oh, and and number seven is. It it was an asterisk on the um org chart. That the only one that can call a Personnel Committee meeting is City Administrator. I don't agree with that. The Chair of the Personnel Committee should also be able to call a Personnel Committee meeting.
I think we were getting rid of the Personnel Committee now that we have a city administrator.
We have decided to keep it. Well, and there's got, there's gotta be. Order.
Yeah, there's gotta be accountability.
Right, but you want the Personnel Committee. Um, it might, you know, we had a discussion, I think there needs to be a broader discussion about it, you want that committee. So that when there's issues um that are usually referenced in the personnel policy. That they can meet and handle those issues, and and there's usually very specific reasons the Personnel Committee should be meeting. You know, it might be going beyond the scope to. You know, it it's not a staff committee where you meet with the staff all the time, but this is what the org chart kind of gets to, but you do need a Personnel Committee.
That's what we had before, they were meeting regularly, but we're not, you're not doing that anymore.
That's, yeah, what he's saying, we can't have regular meetings.
One, because otherwise you'd have to notice them to the public. Right, for for when you have to deal with like discipline issues, et cetera, so that's really what. So you wanna have it, but you gotta look at that policy and. You know, is that in the policy that says that the administrator can call a Personnel Committee meeting?
It's on the, on the updated org chart, there was um an asterisk.
It was on the original one as well, and the revision separated out Personnel Committee. From other committees, so that you also have a direct line to council.
The only thing I'm asking for is that we. We remove that, that. Statement saying that the Chair cannot call.
Remove, remove the dotted line to City Administrator.
No, 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 it's the asterisk on the bottom.
First to a resolution.
Yeah. But um with all due respect to, I mean, if you ask me to call a meeting, I mean, why would I not want to either, you know? I mean, because it's just gonna be coordinating more.
I get it, I get it, but tell me what Chair of any committee on the city can't call a meeting, you know?
Standing committee.
If it's standing, then then we have to turn around and publicly put it as a standing committee, and you don't wanna have that for personnel, right?
But that's the whole point here, is that, is you you shouldn't be calling meetings at anyone's discretion. City Administrator, Chair, anybody's discretion, the Personnel Policy should dictate when the Personnel Committee acts on, does something, is obligated to do something. Then you should be calling meetings when those events are triggered. So and if it's not one of those delineated events in the policy and you're calling meetings more frequently, you then. You know, it's not, it's not a black and white issue, it's a gray issue, then you kind of move toward a standing committee where they need to notice that to the public. And so I don't know what's actually been going on, but, you know, when the Personnel Committee is obligated to do something, they should be able to meet. Without it being a standing committee. And I just questioned, I mean, I looked at that policy and I was like. A lot of that in a lot of cities would be delegated to the administrator, like accepting a resignation and doing an acknowledgement. But that's not the way it's written in your policy, so there's probably fifty issues like that that you'd be.
That's why it's been in revision for a year, right?
Well, we just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention of what's going on, and we haven't been abusing uh that personnel.
No.
And if something else comes up, okay.
I'm not policing it or anything, I'm just telling you, giving information so you understand. Like what, I mean, that's my idea of a Personnel Committee, I suppose you could give them broader authority here. Without it becoming a standing committee, but then I would just question, what is the authority, and like, how do you know? You know, as Personnel Committee members, how do you know when you're supposed to be doing something? And when you're not supposed to be doing something, or how do you know when you're supposed to engage the Personnel Committee, right? Shouldn't that be in the policy? So that you have some guideposts, or you're just ad hoc, I'm gonna call a Personnel Committee meeting today. I mean, I guess I'm I'm unclear as to why.
Yeah, so there there's specific things, like, let's say that we have to review something or um. And and we we have meetings, we've had meetings like, for instance, with Kane and Sunny. That's before you were Vice Chair. And and that's, that was basically a Personnel Committee meeting, inviting Kane and talking about the different policies and. Things of that nature, so.
Yeah, it'll take some work, I mean, I'm just, I can't really advise you, because I just don't know, honestly, I don't know what's going on, so. But I'm just giving you the general guidepost, and then like a lot of city city administrators will engage the Personnel Committee. At their discretion for additional items like. They wanna review policy X, and she doesn't have time to review policy X, and it's a personnel-related policy, she might delegate that. And then you'd have an ad hoc meeting to discuss that policy, like pay time off or whatever, you know, the ones that you brought up, again, that's the three. You know, or or the hours of City Hall, whatever, that would be a night, you know. It's hard to put that in a policy, but but typically, it'd be like, and you can look at your policy now. I mean, you guys are gonna do this, you're gonna go re kind of rework it a little bit, but look in that thing, I mean, there's a lot of. You know, if there's a discrimination complaint, you know, that goes to the Personnel Committee, I mean, there's a lot of things that are triggered for the Personnel Committee. But then, if they're not in that policy and we're meeting on issues, I think it's gotta be directed by the administrator, probably. I I don't know, I guess that those are my initial thoughts, I, it might be too much to bite off for tonight's meeting, honestly, but. It definitely needs to be looked at, though, it's um and I'm looking at it now, it is forty. Three pages, so it's not, it's not a short one, it's kind of a.
Well, and and certainly I will say, I mean, I know my limitations, and I know. Um, those things that certainly would need to come to the Personnel Committee too, so.
Yeah, I just did a control up, the word administrator does not appear in the policy, and you have an administrator, so that tells you something.
Right now, let's leave it as it stands.
No, I I don't agree.
No, I think we've gotta take that asterisk off, and if we need to get together, we should have the ability to do that, and that's what I'm just saying, remove the asterisks. You know, and everything is fine with the chart, that's it.
And I think, I mean, honestly, if you're gonna change the policy, you could remove the asterisk and have them call meetings. Based on the policy you've got now, which doesn't match what you you're probably doing, and then address it later on in a month or two, whenever.
Yeah, and I don't think the org chart is in line, probably is in line with the policy.
Yeah, but we don't wanna, that's that's another.
No, I know, but I guess to that point, to that point. It's not updating policy, it's just removing the asterisk.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that, the org chart was the quickest way to facilitate. Organization for the city. Absence. Orders, amendments, and uh this policy change and stuff, that was, that was kind of a thing.
Really, it's an org chart.
Well, and it would be the first one, right?
Right.
Um, Mayor, when you were on the Personnel Committee, did you, did you have Chair?
No. We had two people. Staff put the agenda together. I typically led the meeting, but we had no Chair. At that time, we had first document, it was a first bill slash staff meeting. It wasn't a separate, we did have a separate staff, it was all kind of encompassing.
This gets way deeper into it, but that's part of the thing, dude, the mayor plays a much more prominent role in this policy. Than you're actually doing now, because there was no administrator, so if you look through it, you go take a look through it, and Vice Mayor is too, so the mayor and Vice Mayor. They're doing more like, more than just ministerial tasks, they're like involved with substantive things, and that's not what you're, you know, so take a look at that, and that. Probably would be the administrator, because you didn't have an administrator before.
So in my opinion, I think Personnel Committee should not be. Working independently of the administrator before they come to the council.
Yeah, so all he's saying is, he just wants to be able to have the autonomy to call a meeting.
And prior. Prior to to me being Chair, Lori was the Chair.
You only have a meeting of two, and it's ad hoc, right, not whatever.
Should we move along, I'm just trying to get real on stuff that comes in. Let's go, yeah.
Um, so then the the last one that's on here, I don't, it's not really a personnel thing.
And it's already on the agenda.
It's already on the agenda, so that's, number five we'll scratch, because that's elsewhere.
Let's see.
So.
What are back to order and sure?
We still. For the agenda motion, we were also gonna take care of number three as well. Quote for the lion sign language, or signage.
Uh, we do, we do that, or we do. That's in separate, I think, too, for the signage, that's in here, so we can cover that at that time.
It's on the back of page one thirty.
Uh, that, the one, yeah, I don't have it back, it's one sixteen and.
I don't have it anywhere else.
I make a motion, we approve the uh vote from all around electric. We're installing the LED sign over on the west. Lake Shady Avenue, as well as hooking up the outside here, and eighteen hundred dollars. And a thousand dollars for the transformer. And the thousand dollars for the transformer. For People's Energy Corporation to install would be all using the American Rescue Plan funds.
My second tag, motion was there by Dana, so I did a second.
He made.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I jumped in because I thought it was gonna be a lot shorter of a motion, so I apologize.
We got it done, okay.
So it's twenty eight hundred dollars.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have, uh, this is. Right now, we have, um. Forty eight hundred dollars left in our American Rescue Plan as matter of information, you can add that. But we need to, um. Be coming back with a resolution as soon as possible to kind of clean everything up, so. But looking at after we finish the sign installing. See what we have. Any other comments? Seeing none, all of the favors, seeing the other thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Order sewer? We have white eyes update, Joe.
Even, um. I, I guess there's an update on the open houses, we did have, uh. Really open houses on May twenty second, twenty third, I thought we had. A decent amount of attendance and, uh, airproof meetings. I always like to see more people there, but a lot of people did come and. We've obviously had a fair amount of correspondence by email and phone call too. So I think we're getting the word out. Um. We just want a treatment facility, contract one, project update, uh, lots going on at the treatment facility, I think a few of you were out there last week.
Yeah.
Good. And of course, anybody that wants to come out, uh, things are really shaping up out there in terms of, uh. What the facility is gonna ultimately look like, uh, a lot of the work is getting completed. Um. There continues to be some. Um, site grading and excavation, backfilling the structures, that's really making the facility take, take shape. Uh, a lot of the, uh, plumbing mechanical work is complete, uh, really, the structures are in place. The contractor continues to install equipment and piping, uh, process work. Uh, and there is a fair amount of electrical, um, work that's ongoing, but, uh. Again, the, the facility is really starting to take shape and things are coming together, so. Uh, we are on target for what we need to do, um. Things that we've been really talking about, the big, big item is. Um, the switchgear delay that we've been kind of continuously talking about, right? And so, um, there's really no. Nothing that, well, one thing has changed, so the contractor. Or the manufacturer for the switchgear said, yep, um. We can reserve your spot, manufacture the switchgear and get it to you probably by the end of May, but it's gonna cost. Sixty three thousand dollars if you want to expedite that, and if you don't want to expedite that, we can. Provide that to you. By the end, by October, so five months later, and so, um, that's one of the change order items within your packet. Um. The contractor also kind of gave us, uh, the supplier also kind of said, you know, you gotta make a decision within the next week or ten days. And I kind of said, that's not how cities work, you know, and frankly, my recommendation for that amount of money. Would be to say thanks, but no thanks.
Yeah, right.
Um, so we did talk about that with sewer water committee and I think they agreed, but that window to. Um, deliver in May has closed because we didn't reciprocate. Now, I can reach out to them again if the council wishes. Um, and ask them to look for another, um. Slot to expedite that, but again, we would come probably back with more money. And so, looking at your faces, I'm seeing that there's not a lot of support for that and I don't disagree.
What was the original date of delivery? That I, that was scheduled?
Twenty four, well, it should be here now.
Well, and I guess that's where I have problems, that they're, they're saying, okay, we'll, we'll get it to you faster if you give us more money, but it should have already been here.
Yeah. It is, it is a problem.
Yeah.
Um. And I, you know, I think there's all kinds of reasons for it, I do think there's supply chain issues and, and materials shortages, um. For example. I'm a small piece on this Mayo Clinic Anderson building project.
Mm-hmm.
Hundred million dollar project, the first bid package that went out, switchgear. Project's not designed completely yet. Tells you.
Hmm.
Everybody is seeing this and it. Didn't used to be like this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, do I think the contractor could have sped up the shop drawings and those processes, yeah, I do. But, you know, instead of a fifteen month delay, would we be looking at a eight month delay? Yeah, we would, and so, you know. It reduces the problem, but it still means there's a, there's a big problem there, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's frustrating thing and that's what we've been working for, or working towards to deal with this, uh. The temporary electric panels to basically. Take the place of that so we can get operational October and that path. Is still moving forward, there are some costs that the contractor is kind of pushing towards us. And we'll get into that discussion with the change orders. Um, but I, for the update. Things continue to progress like we thought, so we are looking at, um, commissioning in September. Start up in October. With wastewater flows coming in October. And then at this point, we'll probably be using that temporary, those temporary, um, panels per year. And then that change order. Or change over from this, the temporary to the permanent switchgear occur over. There's essentially a two day window that we'll have to. Make special accommodations at the facility that have wastewater coming in. But we've got a plan that we can, we can work around that or work through that. Um. To make that happen, so that, that portion of the discussion. Uh, is positive, the other thing that makes this all possible is the M C C stuff. The machine control. Equipment. So. The switchgear essentially feeds that, right, and that runs, that's, that runs everything. And so that delay is supposed to be July, or that. Equipment is supposed to be ju, delivered. The date we've been told is consistently for the last six months is July seventh. And based on last week's meeting. Helen Bradley is still on task to deliver on time, which is great, because if that. Slides, then, you know, none of it matters in terms of the temp power. Stuff, so that piece is still coming. We are increasingly confident, but. None of us, I think, would bet our lives based on what the contractor tells us, but they. They have positive thoughts there too, so. Things are looking good from that perspective, I think, if they need to, uh. Um. Back on a little bit, but I. Hope that continues, so, um. That is the real quick update for the wastewater treatment plant, did I miss anything? There's a lot of information in the, uh, sewer water committee meeting minutes, we'll talk about the change orders in a little bit here. Um.
I have, so the July eighteenth meeting, we should have a pretty good picture. Of where we're at as far as the equipment arrived when it was supposed to, and we'll be able to do the commissioning in September. Operational October, we should have a pretty good feel for that.
Right, and I should also mention, I, I guess I don't see it on the agenda, but it's in sewer water committee. Meeting, we have our P Sonny's kind of drafted and I, me and my staff are reviewing, uh, hopefully getting something back. Late this week, uh, for the request for proposals for, uh, operations assistance for the wastewater system. And so we're hoping to get that out here very shortly and then. Get that operator, you know, get the proposals back, probably do some interviews and it's like the candidate. That participate in the commissioning and then obviously the operations. So, there's a lot, a lot going on, a lot going on.
Which you'll be done.
Um. So the components that are necessary for Fitzgerald to start up. They don't have to be done with everything. But they have to be done with the lift stations. Uh, the truck sewer, feeding the lift stations and the force main to and from the wastewater treatment plant and largely. They're, they're in decent shape, I mean, most of that truck. Um. Force main is in, most of the truck sewers, with the exception of the stuff downtown, is in, um. A lot of the low pressure sewer system. You know, stuff within the right of way is in, uh, the lift stations are. Plum, they're not complete, but they're coming together as you can see as you drive by them, I mean, there's been concrete work on site, the electrical work. Is, is, is wrapped in, uh, the structures are complete, uh, the pumps are in sight. Um, People's Co-op is installing transformers and three phase power to those facilities. You know, there, there's a lot of moving pieces, but, yeah. Um, they should be ready.
Could be moves like this, may on.
Well, but you, you know. I, I recognize that, you know, construction is slow, but they do have. Reutility crews, one street crew and a restoration crew in town working every day. Um, so is it as fast as they would like or we would like, probably not? Um. And is there a lot of disruption and activity, yeah, and is there a ton of work left?
Yeah.
There is, but. They are moving forward, um, and making steady progress.
Hopefully, if I bid July, hoping that all three crews will be working downtown. You've been having gotten all the peripheral work done, if they handle.
But I'll get into a little bigger update on the downtown work or the contracts two and three work when we get. Get there, so I decided I keep this all straight.
Yeah, that day first, then we go back to change orders.
Um, update on contracts two and three?
Yeah, we handled the two change orders first of the treatment plant.
Whatever you want, Mayor.
Yeah, that's, in our packet is, uh. Do you have a copy of the packet, page twenty five?
Yeah.
I love the page.
Oh, that's so much better.
So we, we do have, um.
Yeah, two change order approval.
Yeah, two change orders for approval and then within the sewer and water committee meetings, there was some discussion about some other change orders. Some of which we've asked for additional information, some of which we've recommended, um, to decline approval and some of which we've recommended that we improve. Um. So this will continue to kind of come back to you, I will kind of note that. Um. I think the original submitted for the contractor is a bit of a negotiation, I think they're reaching a little bit, maybe? In my opinion, um, I think we're pushing back in some areas and ask for some additional information. Um, you know, it's, it's no different than anything else, uh, with the contractor. Um, there's some give and take that will no doubt have to occur, we're working through that, so we'll keep you involved. If you have questions, um, certainly ask, we've included a decent amount of information in sewer water committee. Um. And in the minutes and, and if there are questions, I'd be happy to talk, talk about it. But the two that we do want to move forward, one is a. Uh, modification to the sludge loadout, um, facility at the wastewater treatment facility. Um, currently what was bid is a, a loadout facility that is. Basically, uh, stand. You know, it sits off, off the ground about this high and you connect the piping to the, uh, hauling facility. Um. And either suck it out or pump it out, but there's. A, a little bit more. Hands-on activity necessary than probably you're gonna want, talking with Kane and talking with some of the contract haulers. Um. So what we've kind of worked with the contractor to do is to devise a loadout facility that you essentially drive under. And it loads from the top. And then there with that is a push button, start, stop for both sets of pumps. And so it becomes a s- simpler task, uh, that's less. Um. Less interactive, let's say, and, uh, I think that ultimately the city will be happier with it. Uh, there is some cost to that, it's about a.
Third.
Thirty one thousand dollar add. Um, but I do think at the end of the day. You know, it does, does provide some value, it's a, it's a positive change, so I think that makes some sense, and then the other piece was. Um.
Gas service.
Yeah, kind of formalizing the discussion we had last month, we, remember we had a fifty five thousand dollar allowance, the gas cost was significantly more. Uh, as a result, we have to essentially increase that allowance by a change order. And so the contractor provided a request for change order for that.
Twenty one thousand.
Three eighty two.
Three eighty two, and so the, those two combined change order requests, we recommend approving. Um, and the other ones will continue to, uh, work with the contractor on and, and negotiate.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, um. The change orders one and two totaling fifty two thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Okay.
Any other comments?
One comment, just to clarify, this isn't a formal change order, I will. Draft the formal change order that goes with this, I'm just gonna tell the contractor to do these two things. I'll bring a formal change order for you guys to review and sign next month, but I'm, this is just.
It's like a game, yeah.
To get going, because we're at a, at the point, especially with the sludge loadout, that they're gonna build it this month.
Yeah.
You hear the comments? Seeing none, all of them favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
I pose same sign. Prove. Any more comments about contracts two and three?
Um, lots continues to happen on contracts two and three, I mentioned that the contractor does have three utility crews, uh, in town. A couple items of note, uh, one, you're gonna start seeing more and more activity downtown. Uh, the contractor started to extend sanitary sewer on, uh. First Avenue, kind of on the east side of the church there, on the middle of this church, uh, some of that sewer is really deep, it's up to twenty.
Lewis Church.
Lewis Church, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Crazy. Um, much of that sewer is really deep, you know, it's twenty. Twenty plus feet deep, so, and it's a lot of sand material, so you got a tremendous amount of, um, material to move there, so the process is gonna be pretty slow. Um. A couple of things. Uh, one item of importance is, next week, contractor wants to install two utility crossings south of the river. Across Minnesota Avenue. So they would do two crossings in one day. In order to do that, they would have to close Minnesota Avenue for a day. And so we will have, uh, that signed. And we will have a, you know, kind of a unofficial detour route, how to get around it. Um, post it based on what the contractor is telling me and we'll also have some advanced warning signs and we'll set by the notice probably on Friday. Informing people that, that closure would happen, but right now, to get the word out, that's what there is.
Yeah.
Um.
Right here, Carl.
So.
Where?
I think they're looking at these two crossings.
Definitely.
Best street, the third street, south of the river, the old school house is right here.
Okay.
The one here. One here. But we'll have, you know, like I said, we'll, we'll have a little announcement. It'll go out to email, be on Facebook and what we normally do. Um, probably on Friday, and we're tentatively looking at that closing on Tuesday of next week.
Supposed to be long days and they'll be done by seven P M in the evening.
Or whatever it takes. Yeah.
Not past ten.
You don't work in the dark, but yeah.
That's all right.
Good day, put a sign up here in the town like you did. Going down.
Yep.
Then it'll be closed for today.
Yeah, that, that's the advance warning sign I was talking about, yep, so we'll have that posted probably right here Monday.
Cause it's unbelievable.
End of the week.
Uh, Tuesday, Tuesday. I should just get the date so people know.
Two, two, twenty.
Twenty seven.
Tuesday the twenty seventh.
I'll be up.
Hard to believe already.
Thank you.
Um. Other things that are of interest, uh, Ellingson is talking about moving. Several crews in to start the low pressure sewer system, uh, I think the second week in July. Um, so. We'll go from busy to really busy, um, we're gonna probably start talking about, um. paving streets in July, August. Um. There'll be a lot of activity, there is a construction coordination meeting with the contractor on Thursday. Ten o'clock here. With Fitzgerald, so at that, we'll be talking about. At o'clock here with Fitzgerald. So at that, we'll be talking about their schedule. Um and you know, a handful, a pretty good handful of issues that need to be addressed. In addition to utilities, they continue to make progress on um fine grading and and utility or and and. Restoration work, so seeding and obviously it isn't raining, so something is growing, you know, it does mean that they are able to.
To grow, it seems to be really cut down Minnesota.
A day.
No, that they did here another day.
When will they get paid back? You know, I don't know that, but I think the plan is is probably to get all. Four of them done and then have somebody have Matthew.
Somebody asked me.
Yeah.
Should I had no idea.
So probably, probably a safe bet is July.
And notice um number twenty-four update. Currently out there.
Yeah.
That time is our sewer grinder station proposal from Alexson for. Uh to install a lot hundred and fifteen feet of the line to the uh Oracle Park Restrooms. I make a motion, we approve Alexson proposal for eighteen thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars. And we will use American Rescue Plan funds for that. And is there a timeframe on that or sometime?
I will just uh inform a little of that and uh. And they'll do it whenever they.
Any other comments? Say none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. There's a sanitary survey report regarding our Oracle Public Water System in your packet. And the last item is a uh. Implementation grant. I don't see anything in the pack. M D H S W B.
Oh, that was just an update.
What is an update?
That we have been awarded that and um and the contract is ready to sign. Council would.
Oh, well.
Right, ceiling.
Well, ceiling residents to you. That was brought to us last month. Okay, uh next item is Public Works.
So did you approve it last month?
Yeah, we saw some.
Did we have a motion?
I think we did. I don't remember for a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, that was for the application itself. This is now the award. So. I think let's get a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the uh Minnesota Department of Health. Seating will permit implementation grant. For ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. It's approved. Public Works side, I added an item, uh just for clarification, it's the May meeting. Uh Kane shared with us the um. Issue of uh getting a confirmation for a. Uh twenty twenty-four Chevy pickup and Pearl Chevrolet by using estate bids. Um we had a lot of discussion about that, about what we were potentially could be liable, not liable for, but. Responsible for it, we got the pickup in twenty twenty-three. We do, it could be twenty twenty-four. Um we did make a motion, uh but as it turns out in our miscommunication between Public Works and city staff. That form was not sent in. So um and there's, you know, we talked about the different rationales of of doing it. We did have a motion, but um. As it turns out, it was not sent in, so what that means is that uh we won't. Be eligible for at least uh twenty twenty-four for one of the state bid pickups. Uh if we do get a fourth employee that warrants that we could. Be looking at a used pickup for the fourth employee, um and then we'll try again in twenty twenty-five too.
Well, just a second, that that's not true. There you Clamager Lake can get order one. Ford can order one, Dodge can order, get state bits, they can order them, yeah. That's Carlson just selling them. You know, to doctors, yeah, they're they're all out there, yeah.
Well, I heard that the. Just going by what Kane shared with us.
Right, right, but I mean, he was talking to Carlson, they wanted to sell him a new truck. But I checked after next day when, you know, when Kane said they had to all be done and. So I mean, if they, if you guys decide you wanna go, you know, have Kane get a hold of them, you know. So there's other options.
Well, as you all know. My only issue was uh similar to what. Mike has said tonight that, you know, make decisions based on data in front of you. Um rather than.
And I I think there are two. With Kane on that. Um as I understood, I don't think Kane was looking for a for a motion. I think things just amped up and. All of a sudden, there was a motion and it was it was done. It it was just kind of an F Y I, from what I understood from Kane, just to say, hey. By the way, just know that this is what we're looking at um.
But we felt pressured. I feel like we felt a little pressured because he was saying that we have these dates to work with and we had to do it by a certain time. That's where I think the, that's where I think it got. Do you know what I mean? Do you remember that?
Yeah, I think it went from here.
Kind of like we had to make a choice.
Kane's fault, it was the salesman.
Sure, 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 but I just want, yeah, it was, yes, agreed that maybe we just have to pay more attention.
And I mean, I think we ought to get to bed. I mean, I've been after Sunday to try and find out what are. What are, where we gotta go for a bit, how much we can spend without getting bit, but I mean, something like a truck. I think we ought to get to bed. Did you ever find that, Sonny?
Remember I gave you.
Well, you gave me the state. No, I wanted to know what. At the state. But we'll talk.
So the Streets and Roads. Um Streets and Roads Committee met. Um Kane, Jim and I and Sunny, and we reviewed the two things that were brought up in the May meeting at church corner. Crosswalk in front of the post office. So we did meet, uh we talked about the crosswalk from the post office, so. Uh the last time we looked at this, um Mendot's regulations did not. Last time I looked at the regulations is pre-twenty twenty-one, because there was a change in twenty twenty-one. Prior to that, they said the only place crosswalks could appear would be at intersections in um. I think November of twenty twenty-one, they modified that and showed a diagram of crosswalks mid-block, not in intersections. So the, based on that being in the Mendot information. We are, we can't put crosswalks, um paint a crosswalk in front of the post office where the other one is currently fading. The only additional requirement, you go back about, go back twenty feet, you can, in either lane on the southbound, you can put a solid. Twelve-inch white line and a sign that says um. Stop here for pedestrians in crosswalk. Same time, there's a another line going northbound. It's not quite at the intersection, but it's real close, a white line and the northbound line and the sign that says the same thing. So that's, that's great to see Mendot's approval to do that. We continue to discuss about that and the traffic going by and and we. The street committee was is concerned about the speed of the traffic. We have a thirty mile an hour speed limit there, but if anybody's. Gone to the post office, you know, there's a lot of traffic. It goes by, it's probably going faster than thirty miles an hour. And so um and also, we have a lot of people, uh a couple, at least one time, we were more turning. At the V S, the Presbyterian Church, so the street committee is looking at. Um recommendation to the council is to install stop signs on Minnesota Avenue, northbound and southbound. For a stop at that corner of the V F W and the post office. Just to help emphasize stopping, slowing people down. Um at that intersection or on Minnesota Avenue.
Now, are you open for discussion on that or?
Yeah, we can discuss that first.
Okay, um I I agree with with the crosswalk, without a doubt, that's there at at the post office to put that. Uh my concern is that, and I went to Kane and pulled the records he did from what there was for traffic. Going up and down Minnesota Avenue. There's twelve hundred cars go one direction during the day, which is what was counted on when we had the sign out for the speed limit sign. Okay, and so we have a number that's there, so if twelve hundred are going one way, you got twelve hundred going the other way. You got twenty-five hundred cars a day. You know, that you're asking to stop with, that are not used to stopping at a stop sign, and I think it's gonna. Cause a lot of chaos that there is for people that go through and they normally. Are going to pick up fifty-two to head south, so you're not gonna have another direction or way to go around them, so. Um I recommend against putting a stop sign, but definitely putting a crosswalk with the. The notifications that there is that that are there to get the the attention. I think that's gonna work. You know, enough to give that a try, you know.
I I would rather have the crosswalk than the stop signs only because. There has been, I know there was a terrible accident in Pine Island, kind of with a similar situation with changing of signs and um. Lot of traffic and kind of that same thing, so I'd rather, I think, see a crosswalk first and signage to see what that would do. We've never had signage. We've always had a crosswalk. We've never had signage.
Rather than a stop.
Rather than a stop sign, maybe even the flash, maybe the fancy signage where it's a fat, you know, flashing light. I don't know.
And it is law if someone's in this.
Correct, yeah, right, right, um.
And crosswalk isn't warning people.
Right.
Yeah, I I I agree with that. I I worry that that might cause more harm than good, the stop sign.
Well, it's um and that's a fair point. I understand that. I know we talked and let's just go to the Presbyterian Church corner. Um so we went up there and uh we recognized that, and Jim, I guess, please comment as well, and we. Uh the stop sign is in a position where it's hard to see traffic coming.
From the south.
Probably a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Um then Dot's regular recommendation for thirty mile an hour cars is two hundred feet, which is. Another hundred feet beyond that, which you can't see because of the corner and the uh. The the wall that's been installed there now, and so unless you move for your. Creep up into the almost, you're almost creeping into the north, to the southbound traffic in order to see that far now. So um there's a lot of people going to the Presbyterian Church. Um especially for the food bank.
Right, we served thirty-six families on Wednesday night. So it's just so busy. So if we were to put a stop sign anywhere on Minnesota Avenue, I'd want it.
That's that's our.
I'd want it to be there, you know what I mean?
I put a stop sign there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with the same thing I said was top sign that's gonna be going either way, whether it be at the post office or be at the Presbyterian Church. Um looking at at the Presbyterian Church, you're asking everybody to stop every day. No matter what, and those aren't the issues that are going on with the church, which has been there for a hundred years. And I would like to have a report that there is from the the. Um State Patrol or from the sheriff on how many accidents. According to Kane. Over his length of time, there's never been an accident that's been there. So I look at other options that might be available to to bring attention to what's going on. And I think putting a sign up there, even if it would be with a flashing light, to say blind intersection. Or or something to draw your attention to what's going on there. I think will have a a big effect to make sure people are aware that something is going on. You know, I'm looking for safety, but I'm also looking for something that's gonna be realistic. It's trying to have every, another twenty-five hundred cars stop there every day. And the church isn't used that much. It's a short time on certain Sunday services. And for the few hours that you have for what you got with the food bank, food bank, so I think that that would be a a better option to be able to do.
I disagree with that because when you're looking, when you're at the stop sign and you're craning your neck, see what's coming behind you. Southbound, and then if you don't look. To this, to the right or people going northbound. It's like that, that car is there and you're turning into it, you think it's clear, so stop signs will stop speeders. Because you're coming down from a forty to thirty, which is just further down the hill, so whether they're going thirty or thirty-five. Uh your reaction time, and granted, there may not be any accidents, but safety is our concern. And we want to govern safety and promote safety for the the church. The um uh the people that come to the food bank, the residents that live there. Think this, stop signs is a, is a good alternative or good approach to doing that.
Well, and we and we just implemented this in another area of town that has that terribly dangerous blind.
But not on not on Minnesota Avenue.
Right, but if you go through most communities, right, if you go through most communities, we're we're growing. And we're gonna have more residents, we're gonna have more cars going through. Most communities through there downtown, whether it's a. Busy highway, whether what it's, there's usually either a stop light, a stop sign, there's very few communities that don't have any. Regulation, and I I mean, I think if we gave that that, again, the post office, there's visibility, so I'm comfortable with that. There's no visibility here, and um it'd be safer for everybody um. People really go, they go so much faster there than they do down by the post office, because they're coming into town and leaving town, you know what I mean? So they kind of feel like, I'm out of the, it's just so fast.
And then again, I'm going back to middle of the night. Whatever's going on during the week, that's not during the time you're doing this. You're you're putting in a restriction that that isn't something that's an ongoing type situation that's going on at the church.
So one thing I would suggest, because we didn't do this correctly this last time when we installed stop signs, they were just up one morning, nobody, or one afternoon. People went to work and we came home and a bunch of people rolled through that stop sign. We had discussed.
I don't think we're at that.
Just free signage and we had just, you know, um in Rochester, they use um and a lot of places, they use the sign saying. Traffic pattern, change ahead.
We haven't decided if we're gonna be doing that yet, though, that's the whole thing. So I think that if there is a change that way, I agree with what you're trying to say, but. We haven't decided that that's what we're gonna do by putting a stop sign up there yet.
Well, and and just to be clear, at the last meeting, um we received these requests and. And the decision at that time was to send it to committees so that they could come back with a recommendation.
So the recommendation is.
And that's what recommendation coming out of many.
So one thing, one thing I do wanna add, is I I I wanted to actually see it. Be in that, and so I called Jim on his way here. Cause I I, cause I came down that way, I'm like, hey, I I can see. Part of it is the the speed, I think, is a big factor on how fast people come around there. But there was a car in that intersection coming from the church when I was coming down, and I could see him. And it, their nose wasn't out in the lane, so I called Jim to ask him where he was. Just before the council meeting, cause I I asked him, I said, I'm gonna go up in that intersection. Cause he said he was at gas going, I said, well, I'll go to the intersection, you come down, let's stay on the phone. I wanna know, when when do you see me? And staying back behind, I didn't stay behind the stop sign. I was out beyond the stop sign, not at, nowhere's near the line. Didn't tell him.
Because both of us can see each other.
So you saw each other at the exact same time. So you saw each other at the exact same time.
Yeah, so, I, again, I, I understand the safety part that there is, and I'm not against being safe. Before we go to that step of, of doing a stop sign. I think that number one, we should be able to get a report on how many accidents have been there. Cause the church has been there for a hundred years without any problems, it's there. I think putting signs up that say that it's a blind intersection or church traffic or whatever else, and try that first. And see if that doesn't help with people, okay?
Yeah.
And, and, and give it, or, and, and another thing too is we have sandwich boards. You know, that you could put, you know, an oncoming traffic from church, that you could put a sandwich board on each side. If you wanted to do that, the same way you do a VFW and pick them up when it's done, when you don't have the traffic. You know, there's, there's different ways to be able to, I think, do it without disrupting, having that much traffic. Stop that's not during the regular hours of what's going on, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
And I, and I will say, I was shocked, I heard that, we didn't, I don't think we knew how much traffic came through there when we met, I was shocked.
Well, I think too.
Twelve hundred.
But that's, so to me, that's even a bigger reason to have this, these safety measures, like. You're just proving the point of, we need to have more safety measures throughout our community as far as crossing the roads. That's what that proves, and a hundred years ago, I'm gonna assume that wasn't the same traffic pattern, and also. It was a totally different community, so, um. But yeah, I, I like the idea, I like what the, what the, I like the recommendation of the stop sign for, for, um. By the church, and I like the idea of the crosswalk and signage in front of the, um, in front of the post office, um. I, I, I just think we tried signage in that other area. So I feel like it's been a bit of an, we've already done this experiment, and we've already pulled up, you know, we've kind of done it, and what we've realized. And, and Joe has told us this, unless you change the actual structure of the, either they change the pattern or change the road. You know, in the past, that's like the, unfortunately, one of the only ways to change the behavior. Of the speeding and the, you know, and so that's why we implemented what we did with. The signs on the top of the hill there and then the, yeah, I, I mean, I wish, I wish signage. I wish signage, I wish the signage worked as well as we, as it should.
Where do we start?
I think start with the signage and, and see.
We need something.
And I, and I, and I'm a hundred percent for the signage to do that, to give that a try first, before we go, go the other direction.
So the other thing with stop signs, but the stop signs at Minnesota Avenue and post office or the Presbyterian Church. We know there's a lot of truck traffic, and the truck traffic is because they're not going to fifty-two. Or they're not going to fifty-two both northbound or southbound, they're coming, they're taking a shortcut. So that would help, whether it's one stop sign or two sets of stop signs, whatever the case may be. That will help eliminate the truck traffic that's trying to bypass going another. Four, five, six miles to fifty-two interchange that come through Orinoco. That's hard on streets, we pay for the streets, truckers, you know, they're abusing our streets to a certain extent. Are definitely cutting the life. Stop signs would be a deterrent.
Whether it's a gas station.
Safety, the other thing about the Presbyterian Church is that right now where that stop sign is at, we're not meeting Men Dot's recommendations. You can't see two hundred feet. Maybe a hundred feet or something like that. So the first time somebody.
Yeah.
Does get hit, hopefully, God willing and willing, it doesn't happen, but we're violating Men Dot standards right now, but.
And I think waiting, and like, I think waiting for an accident or waiting for somebody to get hurt or even worse, isn't necessarily the right thing. I think we could be proactive.
Yeah, but I think it's gonna be worse in the winter time, maybe you stop the guy going up a hill, what happened?
Well, listen.
Can't take off, you slide backwards.
It's not that big of a, it's more gradual than the one into, into, by the other one we just put up, that was our concern all along, but it just got so dangerous.
From the bridge up to the Presbyterian Church, if you stop there in the winter time, more likely, if I'm in a sand, then. You ain't gonna take off.
It's one of our priority streets that our log on director follows, so. Can't happen sure, it happens ice anywhere.
Oh, yeah. Accidents, yes, it do.
Yeah, cause I, you know, it. The number of accidents is one data point. But the one, the data point you're not gonna have is how many near accidents. Were avoided or.
Um, by the mere fact that the Presbyterian Church did come to us and say, hey, this is a concern.
And it's not the first time they've come to us.
And they've come. And their representative is here again tonight to carry. I would come out on this, so.
And again, it's not just the church up there, people live up there.
Yeah.
People leave every, people live up there every sing- every single day, and down the road past, you know, the opposite way, so I mean. It's a, it's not a, it's not just on Sundays or Wednesdays.
If you want to pass, they, they want to lift up back there, if they want a stop sign down, then they tell you no.
Oh, God, I don't know, Carl, it's, I bet you that every time they drive, every time.
There, they gotta turn and go up the hill, get to their house in the winter.
Wow, but it's so, they have to every time, just cross their fingers when they take a, when they take a left.
If you wanna talk about Men Dot, a good spot is come from Zambroda, coming on the Pine Island to the bridge. And you try and see cars coming across that bridge.
I agree with that.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah.
You better hope the car is high enough you can see over top of it.
But you realize that's.
So, i- if we do signage. If we don't do a stop sign first, and we do alternative signage. I guess my question is. How could we measure? The effectiveness? Cause I, 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 I'm part of city streets and roads. And, and I will say, at the time, I had no idea that we had twelve hundred vehicles.
Each way.
Yeah.
So twenty-five hundred a day.
It'd be, yeah, twenty-five hundred right there, um.
So is it, was it, do we, do we cater to the people that are traveling through our town, or do we, you know what I mean, like, who do we keep safe? Do we, do we, is it, do we wanna, do we wanna prioritize convenience, or do we wanna prioritize safety? I think that's the choice we have.
I mean, I'd like to have a stop sign out in front of my driveway, you know, I mean, everybody would like to have a stop sign, but someplace, I mean, we could say, wow, what if? You know, and, and, and I understand that.
Well, if you, if you lived on a dangerous, like, we literally just did that for a gentleman because of the dangerous situation that his road was. And we, we spent years talking about it, and I think we've spent a long time talking about this, probably too long. And we ca- uh, the roads came to us with the recommendation. So, I don't know.
We had recommendation without stats too.
Yep.
But again, that's, you're looking at convenience versus safety, so it's like, which do you prioritize? It's, yeah, I mean, it is hard, it, I'm not saying it's not a tough decision. But I think every time I'm probably gonna choose a human safety over convenience.
I don't think we're.
That's the, the, the.
No, but I mean, like I said, I, I think that, that putting the caution up, you know, blind intersection or, you know, approaching a blind intersection. We'll, we'll give them a chance to at least. Right, okay, that's, that's what I'm, I'm not saying against safety, I'm saying. Let's, let's take a look at other options that are available first, before we go to that point.
Well, I think that's. The streets committee reviewed it and, um, it was a recommendation, so I. So I'll make a motion that we. Install the, um, the crosswalk. In front of the post office with the additional, per the Men Dot standard. Along with the signs that go, that are needed to go along with that white line. Cars to stop here for people in the crosswalk. And I also recommend we install the stop signs on Minnesota Avenue, northbound and southbound. And provide adequate information upfront that. Stop signs will be installed at a certain date. Ten days ahead of the installation.
I would like to have those motions separated, not combined.
Sir, second to the motion.
One second.
Okay, we have a second for the motion. To deal with two things of the recommendations for the street committee.
Can I amend that friend, like, make a friendly amendment that we actually purchased the traffic pattern change signs?
I'm sorry.
That we actually utilize traffic check, there's a sign, a big yellow sign that says traffic pattern change ahead.
Oh, for the awareness.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we could probably do that.
I think it's, I don't, I think it's necessary for where we are view, putting this, to Jim's point, that.
I wanna, I wanna make sure we do that.
But it needs to be, and, and we can tell our community, but a lot of people that travel through that don't live here, so I think it would be. You know, out in front of those stop signs, we need to, I would like to see those traffic pattern change ahead signs on both directions.
I think it's, you know, I, I guess my perspective from the street committee and, and Jim, you can comment too, those were the recommendations for those two situations, and if you wanna. Um, split it out, you can. Vote it down, and we'll have another motion, but trying to expedite time here and still take care of what we were asked to do, so.
And I, and I'll just say, I, at the time, I had no idea we were looking at twelve hundred vehicles one way. There's a motion. Yeah.
Okay, motion.
I know, the, the motion was split out, I guess.
Was it split?
No.
No?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't put together.
Second.
Oh, I thought there was.
No, no, she seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Putting the recommendation together from the streets committee, so.
Her friendly amendment was to add additional signage, traffic pattern change ahead.
I like that. Any other comments?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ooze?
I, I would make the recommendation to split.
What's your motion?
Did you too?
Yeah. I make a motion that we, we separate those and, and vote with it similarly for a crosswalk that there is in front of the post office.
Well, you don't, you don't need to make a motion to split it, you just will make a new motion for.
That's what he's doing. I turned it.
So which one are you doing the?
I made a motion that to turn around and talk about the post office and the crosswalk that there is at the post office.
When you make a motion, we've already talked about it thirty times, wanna go home.
Thank you.
So you made a motion, you're setting a motion, need to have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, motion is to paint the crosswalk and white line in front of the post office. On Minnesota Avenue.
With sign.
And with.
And the appropriate signs, yes. Any other comments? Saying none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that's approved.
That you seconded it? Thank you.
Is there another motion?
The one we.
I, I would make a motion, based on what we know now, at the Presbyterian Church, to. Start with signage first, something that tells it's, it's a blind intersection. But my, my issue is, we can't monitor it. The effectiveness.
But you're gonna monitor it in an accident.
Yeah, in the accident would be your monitor, so I, my motion is, we, we start, we start with signage. Both ways, blind intersect, well, the south, coming from south is really the blind intersection.
So we, we make, we, we monitor this until there's an accident, and then we put in stop signs? Like, is that the data you want? You want someone, you want there to be an accident before you put the stop signs in?
How, how was, would we monitor, I guess?
I guess, what I would do is I would listen. I'd listen to the people that traverse it all the time, and I would probably trust their experiences. Versus waiting for somebody to get hurt.
I mean, there's a lot of intersections, I mean, like I say about that one Pine Island just put in, not five years ago, that bridge. I mean, if Men Dot wants to holler about bad spots.
It's not Men Dot though, Carl, it's like, literally, if someone gets in an accident and we're not following. If, I mean, we could be held liable for that, because we did not make appropriate changes and, and be, and we're not safe, you know what I mean?
We haven't did that, the county put that in there many years.
Doesn't matter, it's there, it's there, it's our job.
As the county, we did not do the route, and the county gave it to the city.
Right.
So I mean, if it was bad then.
But it's, it is ours now, and we have to do right by the, by the people that live here and travel, travel through. And I just don't think that signage worked, I wish it did, I really wish it did, but we just did this experiment. With the sign, with all of that, we did that for how, how long? And we had the poor gentleman living there, coming to meeting after meeting, and, and now we're having. This poor gentleman come to meeting after meeting, and they're telling us what's happening, and we're not listening and changing. So I just, that's my worry is that. I don't love waiting for data, hard data, which is literally an accident. To tell us that it's time to change, I think we can do, I think we can do better than that. By making this change now and using appropriate signage ahead of time.
The monitoring is, is all very subjective. And the first person or group that's gonna send a letter to us saying is the church. The church is gonna come back and ask, why, what are you doing to improve this, the sign is not working? You can see it, watch it, people fly through there, and we haven't improved the visibility. You're losing the visibility to. Monitor the speed coming up north, south, or northbound, and southbound too, for that matter. Just trying to slow the traffic down so people can safely go through that, cause they're asking us now, we don't feel safe going through that interchange.
Well, the other, um, you know, way to, to solve the problem is, um, take the hill down and knock a little bit of that down so the people can see. So there's another solution that there is to it, that will give you that extra distance.
You're gonna ask the taxpayers to pay for that?
No, I didn't say taxpayers, it's, it's not our property, that's, that's, that's the church's property. And the church can turn around and, and knock down part of that hill, they've got an ability to do that too, which might make it easier for them to mow it as well.
It's a city stop sign though, city stop sign there for the traffic.
Well, put, put, put the motion, put a motion up and see how it goes through, hold on it.
I'll make a motion to put up stop signs along Minnesota Avenue at the intersection.
I'm sorry, I started to break down, Jim Richardson started a motion.
No, he said make a motion, he didn't, he said to somebody else. I think we can make a motion to direct and private property to change their property.
But I said my motion is make a motion for the stop sign, we did half of it, do the other half. Come back with the same motion that you wanted to have.
So the other thing, before we do a motion, the other thing to think about is, we haven't done anything with speed there yet, have we? We're not, we have not slowed the speed down.
Again, Jim, we just did this experiment on the others, like, we put signage, we put, we changed the speed limit, and nothing helped until we.
An hour.
And nothing helps, yeah, and what, and they're not gonna follow it, that's the problem, we've learned this lesson, that's what I'm just. What's hard for me to understand about this conversation is we literally have done this for the last two years on, with the conversation we, or with the hill we just had. We had all these things, and we tried. And it failed, and so now what's happened, we put in stop signs, guess what, works like a charm. I didn't want the stop signs there, I'm the, the first one to say, I didn't want stop signs there, I thought the same thing was gonna happen that, Carl, that we're gonna. Get to the top of the hill and people are gonna slide down, I still think that might be an issue next winter. But it works, and it's safer. And I think it's probably the best thing that.
Say, thank you.
And they do, and I just, I don't think that we would. if it's people traveling fast to work that don't live here and we're not in charge of keeping them safe, I'd rather be on the side of our citizens than the people traveling through town.
During the work day, you don't have that much going on with that church anyway that's going on, again, it's, it's, it's a restricted time, and and if you took the pantry out of it, it's only one hour a week that you're looking at of what's going on, and and you're, you're adding time that there is with the pantry. You know, and I, and I agree with, with that part of what you're doing, I'm not saying anything against the pantry, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm against with the amount of traffic that there is, and I'm trying to do it, and I think we need to to put a sign up and try that first before we, we do anything that's, that's, that's there to just save blind intersection, so.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Would you enter, did you have any comments you would wanna make?
Also.
No, but it's, it's.
Step to the podium, please.
We don't do that. It's, it's good time in the morning, yeah.
No, 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 that is the three minute.
You know, the three minutes is for people, everybody else was, they haven't wanted to come up here, but that's fine.
No, no, Carl, if, I mean, Councilor Carl, if I could explain, the three minutes has to do with public forum, typically for things that are not on the agenda at all. This is a, that was on the agenda, and it was, it was my question.
The people wanted to come up and talk, uh, stuff, other stuff, when we were talking about it, he couldn't. It would be between us.
It's proper for me to ask somebody to come up to speak. Uh, I say it's, Mike, please confirm this, but is it proper for particular subject that affects a person or?
Well, no, I mean, I, here's what I think, I think if it's their agenda item, for example, it's their variance request, taking you out of this context, and they have applied for a variance, you would have them come up and speak during the agenda item. I think if, if the reason that this is on the agenda is there's a citizen request regarding it, you can, it's not improper to have him speak now. That being said, it would also be proper for him to speak during the public forum, you even wanna speak? If you wanna speak, if you don't wanna speak, maybe it's easier to just say, it's nine oh five, so.
If I may.
Yeah. Not saying, I'm not telling you not to speak, I'm just saying.
No, I know.
Okay.
You have to put the two issues together, when you brought up the point, Councilman, about us taking the wall, the burn, the bank that they're down, uh, that ties into the intersection. The city hasn't maintained the right of way in that section from Minnesota Avenue. If the right of way was properly maintained and possibly shaved, which is your property, not ours, as was stated in the last council meeting, the stairway doesn't belong to us. The stairway belongs to the city, and if you look at where that stairway is, if the city wanted to be able to meet the standard of the two hundred feet, you could do it by shaving that bank. But that's not our property, it's the city property, and if we have to give up the wall that we built at the bottom of the hill to improve the safety, that's fine, but I still think the issue that has to be addressed is the speed of people going through there. Nobody slows down from forty when the thirty mile an hour speed limit sign comes right at the base of the hill. They're still going forty or faster. So if you have another way to ensure that people are going to stop speeding through there other than a stop sign, which will slow them down, I think it will also, the stop signs would also have benefit to alleviating the problem of the speeders going through where the post office is, where the crosswalk's gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, do we have a motion? Is there a motion to discuss what we're gonna do at Presbyterian Church?
I'll make a motion to, um, install two stop signs. Let the appropriate signage ahead, traffic pattern change ahead, along Minnesota Avenue North and South on that intersection, I don't know the exact road, I apologize. Yeah.
I second that motion. I just, I, I, I guess from the proponent of the stop signs, I think that's will help reduce the speed, I think it sends a signal to everybody that uses Minnesota Avenue, and a lot of those people don't live in Minnesota, or, or in Oco.
And it's, we're, we're cheap, we're growing, we're going to be growing, we're gonna have more people.
Be growing, bringing more people downtown with businesses, we know that's Jeff Green, um, Tiffany, and Cent Fusions, um, and whatever else happens downtown, so there's gonna be more traffic. If we can minimize the truck traffic, uh, or take a shortcut where there should be going to fifty-two anyway, I think that's a plus for all our citizens, everybody that walks on Minnesota Avenue, there's a lot of people that walk and ride bikes on Minnesota Avenue. So to me, I feel it's, it's a win-win situation, yes, there's twelve hundred cars, and they'll all learn to stop, just like we go into Rochester and they put new stop signs, you all learn, we hear good. The city is here to govern, protect our citizens, and that's what we are doing.
I think we, we haven't addressed the speed, as, as the pastor said, we have not done anything with the speed there either. But I think some of what we're looking at is due to, obviously, it's due to the speed.
The only way to make sure somebody slows down is to make them actually slow down first off time, again, we just proved this with our other little project, and I, we tried, we tried all the things you guys are suggesting, we did it all first, we changed the speed, we put up the, we've actually put up the flashing sign, you know what I mean? We put up, I mean, ask Kane how many times he's been out there to put up signage and flags, and change the signage and change it. Nothing, nothing worked until this, I, a hundred percent, I wish it did. I really do, I wish people would follow the rules and slow down, I wish people realized they're driving through a community where people live and work and walk, and it's not safe to drive fast, it's just not reality.
Wish we had speed.
I just like, I mean, I wish, I wish those signage, I wish they worked, it just doesn't. I think, I, I wish we had the, you know, Sheriff's Department here too, because I feel like they would probably agree that sign.
Do is get the Sheriff's Department out there to patrol instead sitting behind the fire hall all night long, you know, that gets old, and I've had, talked to Sergeant Ream about that. You know, you come into town at night, they're sitting right behind the fire hall. Ain't picking up too many cars back there.
So, you know, I think that, um, and we've talked to the sheriff when we've had our speed studies, and the average speed has been, if you talk to the sheriff, whether it was on, um, Semarole Hills Road or West Center Street, the data shows us we don't have a speeding problem, yes, people go over thirty miles an hour, but the average speed was less than our thirty mile an hour speed limit. So, in my opinion, if you, and I'm, I'm a proponent of sometime in the future, talking about twenty-five mile an hour speeds, same time, we're gonna have people going faster than twenty-five, uh, that's just a given, but, um, but for this particular subject, for what we're talking about, of the visibility, for the southbound, trying to see what's coming behind you, and the northbound of hopping over that hill going faster than thirty, or even at thirty, I just feel like it's the right thing to do for our citizens. If, if we don't, if we don't make some type of improvement there, um, we're gonna continually have this issue. Uh, we could reduce the speed twenty-five on that, and we'll still have the issue of visibility.
Call for a vote.
Any other, any other comments?
Just keep going over and over.
Are you done?
I just said call for a vote.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's?
Nay.
Aye. Sustain.
The motion is disapproved, um, this time, uh, we'll just continue on, um, unless something else changes or some other motion comes to us. Hey, uh, we have a contract here for Crackville Seal Coating, paving, marking. So, Joe?
Yeah, we've got, uh, two areas for Crackville Seal Coat and striping as appropriate, uh, one is Lake Shady Avenue, um, and the second one was, uh, the River Park South Division. Um, we did get close for that, the cost to, uh, do the Crackville Seal Coat and striping on that portion of Lake Shady Avenue in Northwest OrnoCo is fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the cost to, um, Crackville and Seal Coat, uh, River Park subdivision is sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, it seems, and of course, you could do both for a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and five dollars, but and I think that's well over the city's budget for this year, and so it seems to me that, you know, if you wanna do a seal coat Crackville project, um, you have to really pick between one of the, one of those two projects, and it's really a matter of, you know, evaluating the need, I think there's need in both areas. The striping in Northwest, uh, is, you know, suspect. We don't have striping in OrnoCo, or in River Park. The other thing to kind of consider is value, um, if you look at unit prices for both the quotes, um, especially the cost, the unit price cost for the striping on that, um, Lake Shady Avenue project, kind of stand out, they're high.
I make a comment here, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn and continue the meeting on, at a different later date, you know, last meeting, we set it up that it was gonna be over at nine o'clock, and it's, you know, I think we oughta continue and make another meeting. Good. We all got stuff to do, and then there ain't no sense in making rules if we aren't gonna follow them.
Dave, the motion dies for lack of a second. Continue on, Joe.
Um, so again, I think, you know, the council for these two areas should look at need and value, and again, in my opinion, um, the unit price, prices for the Lake Shady Avenue North project are probably higher, uh, so you're getting more value for the River Park improvements. You could argue that in the future, uh, Fifth Street will also need the same type of improvements uh, as Lake Shady Avenue, uh, Crackville Seal Coat, Fog Seal over that, and then striping. And so, you know, the council might in the future consider pairing those two projects together, um, and maybe get a little bit of value just because there's more striping volume, more, uh, silicone fog seal volume, and you might get better value, but if the council thinks that, uh, that segment of road is really in need of the work, then you're certainly able to do that too.
Yeah. It'd be nice if we could have, um, Pearson Seal Coat Lake Shady Avenue and have the other vendor, um, striping.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not.
Difference.
Yeah. That's not how it works.
So if we did the River Park with Pearson's at sixty thousand nine hundred and thirty, is that right?
Yep. Nine thirty fifteen.
Which is, um, eleven thousand dollars over CIP, uh, somebody were allocating for our seal coating this year. Or in the Fifth Street, with Pearson, that's ninety, sixty-nine hundred dollars over, uh, the Fifth Street, or I'm sorry, Lake Shady Avenue. And let River Park go another two years.
But you can do it either way.
Is there, um, we have to do striping on Lake Shady if we seal coat it, right?
Yeah, you'd seal coat it, then it'd get a fog seal, that black motion over the seal coat, because it's a higher traffic roadway, keep the chips from flying up, um, and then it all needs to be restripped.
And correctly.
Um, I think you referenced the other side, so this is Lake Shady on the west side.
You know what I'm talking about?
I do know, you mentioned that. Well, yeah, I think budget is definitely a part of the consideration, need is part of the consideration, and then overall value. And it's hard to weigh it out.
Were we, were we talking where, where on Lake Shady?
There's a map in here to be on.
Yeah. On page, no, it's on no page, it's forty-six.
Oh, okay.
Right by the overpass there, that section of it's all grid.
Yeah. It's, uh, there's no, okay. It's just there's no, my brother.
What is?
From, no.
From the south bridge, north of the northern city limit.
The north bridge.
I'm sorry, the north bridge, yeah. The where is the bridge?
Pine Island City Limit.
Yep, the northern city limit.
And when I came in today at the, that, uh, roundabout, they were doing, starting up there.
Along, all fifty-two.
Yeah, off fourth fifty-two at that round.
The, uh, striping contractors recently merged, interestingly enough, but it's not part of competition there.
Really?
I think we have to keep.
There's only a few people that do that kind of work, and one body of the other.
And what's the stone?
Other glass beads.
Yeah, I wonder if all the glass.
They get it better than the epoxy.
Um, if we if it's here in front of it.
And the recap was on page forty-five, um, the bid.
Forty-nine, fifty-three. So if we did the seal coating on Lake Shady Avenue for the fifty-six-nine figure, and come back, could we do crack filling in River Park next year?
Sure.
Would it help us get?
Yeah, what?
And then we wouldn't have to crack filling when we do the seal coating.
Correct.
That might be. So when you seal coat it in twenty twenty-five, then we could do River Park. Or, and then the other area too, that, that needs to. I make a motion that we proceed with hiring Pearson's to for fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents to do the seal coating and striping on Lake Shady Avenue North. About the best we can do with the funds we have, and but it does need, that's never, it's probably been that way since two thousand.
Setback. The county's turn back.
It's a vested interest that we take care of this. Any other comments? Hold a favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, zoning. Venice are there for your review. The church right away, we're very discussion in P and Z about that.
Yeah, we did discuss it and looked at it and we actually had a gentleman that there was in P and Z that had taken care of that hill for a number of years. And what he did is he turned around and he burnt the hills every spring to take care of everything that there was with an overgrowth. And then when it came to mowing, he turned around and had a push mower, a motorized push mower. And he had a rope on the end of it. And he just worked his way up and down, doing it that way. And he did it for years and years and years. And it worked out fine. You know, so we looked at that and have an issue with us with our equipment having, you know, somebody get injured on it with, with what the steepness of the hill is and that is, and it was unanimous. Not to have the city involved with that.
So I know the right away discussion has had something that you talked about that in your P and Z, just in general, about the right away too, sorry. And we do have ordinances that address the right away and the care of the right away.
Yeah, we went, we went through.
So you're saying from applying in zoning perspective, there's nothing really that you'd recommend taking care of. Responsibility of the church to bow it, cut the trees, whatever the case may be.
And then to burn it, which was the way that they kept all of that overgrowth down was just to burn it every spring. You know, I mean, and we, we delved into it and we had the person there that was actually doing it. So we know that it was feasible and it worked well for years that he was doing it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just back up one thing on the first responders on page sixty, sixty one, they did have two applications for two new members. And I'm sorry, I, yeah, I didn't call it out as match night, but that's on
What page?
Sixty one. I love this page.
I always thought to make a motion on this for, okay, I make a motion that we hire the.
Well, the applicants are done at the bottom of page sixty one. Obie Lesnick. Kathy Brand Rucker. For the two applications.
You made a motion. Yeah, I made a motion. Yeah, except those two.
Any other comments? Great to see all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Bold to ask. There was a on, on page sixty. There's a new site on to donate twenty five hundred dollars.
No, they already did that.
They did that. Does that need a resolution? Yeah, they did, but did it need a resolution?
No, that was all done on their own funds. It wasn't done on the city funds. It was done on the gambling funds or whatever you call it, so.
This was for the association.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's nothing.
Thank you. You got a resolution. Twenty twenty three dash seventeen, amending one fifty one, one zero five four.
What, what H U I N O N? Thank you, Sunny, for the numbers. Helping out.
Ninety nine.
Ninety nine.
Here we go, ordinance. So it's twenty twenty three dash oh two, not seventeen.
The resolution is twenty twenty three dash seventeen and the ordinance number is twenty one three dash oh two that behind this. So your resolution adopts the ordinance.
So I, if you want any comments on this round or you're.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I mean, we would, we went over this and, and reviewed it and we went over for a few months and we really feel that this is an equitable, equitable way to go about to give homeowners an opportunity to put other buildings that are there and it, yeah, I mean, so if you look at the numbers and everything, is it really on the chart that's on page one oh one?
Yes.
Okay, we feel that that's a very equitable way to do it, to allow people to be able to put in additional building. And the only thing is that it caps out there at the, at the very top too. So but that was there prior. So we're keeping that same ordinance with the number of buildings, everything else, I think makes sense.
The only comment I have, and just more editorial comment, is if I have exactly one acre, do I get two thousand one hundred and seventy eight square feet? Or do I get two thousand one hundred and seventy eight square feet plus two and a half percent over one acre?
It's less than five percent total lot size, whichever is greater.
So the comment would be is that it's just obviously editorial, but is it, we say right now, less than one acre. But for people that have one acre, it'd be, it might be better as a solution to say less than or equal to one acre.
Look at, I'm just trying to.
And then, but in the next from one to four acres, you say one, you're less than four acres and then it's in the comment to the right, it says two point five of the lot area over one acre. So I, I have no problem with that. It's just that, that person that has one acre is less than or equal to one acre, it's one thousand plus, that's at twenty one. Whatever the number is.
So it's twenty one seventy eight thirty plus two and a half percent of the lot area over one acre. So that's one to four acres. I mean, we tried every which way to do this. This came from Phil as he went through everything with Stantec and, and, and this is what he came up with and, and we looked at it, went over numbers. We really feel that this is, this is the best solution that, that there is. And the number of people that, that are going, remember if, if it goes over from one to four and you've got a question, you can still put in for variance that there is, I might go along with that and people have a question. What we're looking at is, is allowing people that are from zero or less than one acre or one acre itself, which is a majority of the people in town, gives them an ability to be able to put additional square footage in to what they have. So that's what we were really kind of looking at.
So another way to look at it is that one to less than four twenty one hundred square feet. If you have one acre, a person has one acre, it's twenty one seventy eight plus two and a half percent over, which is zero. So it'd be twenty one seventy eight, the same as.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you look at the chart, once, once you, once you hit the one acre, it's, 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 that's where the old plan was.
No, I'm okay. I'm okay with it. I just wanted to pop through that to make sure we're not.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were just trying to make it equitable for everybody that's, that's got a variation of lot size.
I totally agree with that. Okay.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash seventeen.
Second. I think it's missed, right down. I think it should be an ordinance.
The ordinance is now is twenty twenty three dash oh two.
So what's the resolution then?
The resolution is twenty twenty three dash one seven.
Oh, so you're doing a resolution to adopt an ordinance.
Yeah.
Just repeat what Sunny said, do we adopt the ordinance first and then the resolution?
I think by
By adopting the resolution, you're adopting. Cause the ordinance is part of that resolution.
Yeah, typically you would just have an ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh two. I don't think you need a resolution to adopt an ordinance.
But you know, I'll know how fond I am of resolutions.
So, so we just want to do it as an ordinance changes the resolutions and make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh two.
Okay. All right. So I'll change that and I make a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero two.
Second.
But that doesn't give me the vote. That's why I do the resolutions because I, I want to call votes.
If you want to do it that way, I think you, you can do it that way. I just, I think you can typically do, can't you put the roll call at the bottom of the ordinance?
That's not how I prepared this time, but.
I don't mean to be difficult. Do whatever.
I know.
Do whatever.
Do, do your call.
Do whatever. Yeah, it's fine.
Do you want me to repeat that? That resolution, will adopt the resolution?
For all your seconds.
Okay.
And to make a call so we can go through, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we are.
I, I'm.
Adopting.
Yeah.
Your.
We're adopting resolution for ordinance number twenty twenty three dash oh two. Also making reference here as resolution number twenty twenty three dash one seven.
Okay, thank you. Ed Carl seconded it. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Voice vote.
Eric Wors.
Aye.
Hester Phillips.
Aye.
Hester Burton.
Aye.
Hester Richards.
Aye.
Hester Crowe.
Aye.
Thank you.
The resolution twenty twenty three dash nineteen, which was Kent John, Kent Johnson Varians to order ninety four twenty.
That's like a twenty twenty two dash three, dash XX, what, what is that number?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay, that's something we went through, you know, finding the statement of facts, everything that there was, this was a unanimous yes, vote that there was for P and Z.
I had one question. I'm sorry with that. So in the, in the minutes of the P and Z meeting, he talked about being able to turn around in this parking lot.
No, he can't. And, and what, what happened? He says if he was going to do a trailer, it's a blind way for him to try to do it. And that was going after the original other way to do it, which was to put a pad next to an existing garage that was there. But when Phil did the thing with Stantec, he didn't see that that's where the septic system is. Okay. So that eliminated that whole idea that, that Phil was kind of trying to do. So, hey, that was what it was.
So if I understand it right, then for him to use this second driveway, he has to back in the trailer off of Fifth Street.
But he'll be able to see traffic where otherwise he wouldn't be able to see traffic if he tried to do it any other way.
It's just kind of a safety aspect of typically get right where you drive in. But here you're, you're taking, you're out in the street backing up.
There, but there's a sign, if you looked at where the street is, there, there's a whole section that there is where you, they have no parking sign. So there's an extra lane for him to go to. And he's not using this hardly at all. He's only going to use it to put his snowmobiles and then that's it. He's not like he's using it all the time. It's just going to be sporadic and when he does that.
And the other, the other piece of that, that he explained now, when he backs out with the trailer on, he's got to back the trailer out into traffic. And if he doesn't have another person out there, he says he's backing out. You know, it's actually, this way, if, if he can pull in and he pulls up and then backs in.
He can see the.
He can see it. And then when he hooks on his trailer, he doesn't have to back out into the traffic and get his.
Which that's my first thing is to get the traffic back and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash one nine for variance.
Second, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware that I, well, I'm in big favor of second driveways. I don't have a trouble or turnarounds or any of that. We've got a pretty decent history long before you lived here of this council, not us, turning down second driveways. I just want you to be aware of that. Okay. I just want, I, I just feel like this is going to open a can of worms and I just want you to know, I think it's great. I think it's actually safer. But I want you to know that, that's the history of the council's decisions in the past.
Okay, and we did this at a variance, not as an ordinance.
No, they were all after variances. They were all after variances and they had petitions and they had, they had rolled the whole neighborhood signatures. It was a thing. I just want you to know.
I think everybody should have a second driveway.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I just want you to know that the history is.
I took my second driveway.
I think, I think Ryland would agree with that.
Well, that was, well, anyway. And you can go back and read minutes.
Any other comments?
I, I just, for the interest of transparency, I want to make sure that I draw your attention to my memo that, that stated the conditions that staff has added, which are in line with with the city code. And one was that, that the applicant will pay for this sign moving. And then he agrees to maintain the accessibility to the fire hydrant.
Right.
And then also, again, city code ninety four twenty one because driveway ordinance permits are issued by the industry.
And then, then, then he agrees with that. And since he's on the fire department, I think that keeping the fire hydrant would be a normal thing for him to do.
Would you say that?
I did.
On favor, signify by voice vote.
Nice. Mayor Aykroyd.
Aye.
Hester Phillips.
Aye.
Hester Burton.
Aye.
Hester Richards.
Aye.
Hester Crowe.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Last item is a sign approval. God Tracy, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty. And editorial. On page one oh nine, updates.
Yeah, we, yeah. On this one, we, we agreed to that, that all of this made sense for what he was trying to do. They made some adjustments to make sure it was within code. And so we felt.
Yeah, I agree. Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty three dot twenty.
Second. Twenty twenty two.
Twenty three. And maybe, I mean, you know.
That was the testing question.
So you got other comments? Take your voice vote.
Eric Wors.
Aye.
Hester Phillips.
Aye.
Hester Burton.
Aye.
Hester Richards.
Aye.
Hester Crowe.
Aye.
Thank you.
Park and trails minutes. Thank you, Joe. Venice, we did a car in the school. Do you want to speak to this data?
Wait, what? Wait, what?
The garden wants. Park and trails.
You called it. Boom, move on.
Okay, good.
FYI, when they get done with the bags, we use those bags next time, just put them on the pavement, not the grass.
Okay.
Because it was kind of. So I just.
Overnight?
They wanted to call it your Wednesday.
They knew they were there. They were supposed to pick them up the next day, so.
Last item, the update on the LCCMR, we we submitted that with a several region. Several regional, reserve river regional water trail application, and the first go around, we were selected. Two hundred plus, we're one of the one eighty, the first eighty. Um, so now we have an opportunity to give a I give a sunny, introduce me for a five-minute presentation this Friday afternoon. Uh, it's no PowerPoint, just to sit down, share about our project update for five minutes, and then there's a ten-minute Q and A, should they have any questions? And then sometime in early July, they'll take it to the next step to see if we make it to the next step, so. Ultimately, hopefully, uh, it'll be written into the LCCMR bill for the legislators next January. And with the approval in May, we will have funding for the hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so. Which is great. Hope it all works out.
Very good.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Making dreams, did you have any, they're on a date, unfinished business.
Not with regard to the date, but I will tell you, I talked to the township, and they are open to doing that. Um, both, if you wanted to do it with current staff, because now.
I know.
Uh, their clerk and treasurer will leave.
We can wait until they have. Because, yeah, I think you get, I mean, it makes more sense, so I.
Under new business. Package is memos regarding staff and from the county regarding one thirteen, one fifteen, Third Street South West. In Sunny's memo, the very page one nineteen, at the very bottom, um make a comment, I would like to continue working with the owner. I think that's great. It's not a challenge, is there? But I was wondering, and I don't know what you're sharing with the uh where I guess with the letter, you did send a letter to the resident. Uh, but we need milestones. Target dates, things are going to be completed.
I'm with you, because it's been.
One year, years.
And they're not living there, and they haven't lived there, and I mean, there's pictures, if anybody wants to see pictures, and I know they say they're biased.
Your family wants to. Sixty-five years that she lived there with that buck.
I see.
Yeah. The same way, you're never going to get her to clean up.
But it'd be driven by the property since those pictures.
I was, I took some more.
I see the fence.
The fence is up and and in the front and side, I mean, it looks really very much going down.
But the home is literally falling down.
The properties are issues, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and.
Four vehicles sitting in the now, too.
All the vehicles are currently licensed. They're kind.
And we know that for sure, they are.
They are.
I didn't look at it, I just saw.
They are. Because that was what I checked specifically.
But I think that some type of milestones.
Yeah, we had our start of the process. You need me to stay for this one?
You, well, and I can't.
I can say.
You.
She had me look at this issue. We're almost done with it.
Right, because I wasn't sure if you had been in this since twenty sixteen, when I.
I don't recall this particular property. I told them I recall the Tilford property. We went to court on that one. I think we looked at a few other ones. I mean, to me.
I don't.
No, she's, you know what's that?
Yeah, I know, okay.
I mean, the junk, I I think there is some junk on the outside. Oh, here's what I'll tell you. A ninety-second nutshell. You could, there's two things you can do. If you need to tear down the house, if you think the house is so dilapidated where it's not safe for human habitation and it's hazardous. That's one thing. That's a court process that you'd have to authorize, like we did with Tilford, and we went to court and got an order went to court again and again and again until you fixed it, and you ended up fixing it. So that's one process that's called the hazardous building under chapter four sixty-three. The second process is just under your code. And looking at those photos, there's like junk strewn about. That, to me, is more like a nuisance property issue under the city code, which you don't need to go to court for. The city council can just order abatement. Um, you know, give due process notice, you have a hearing for the council, she probably won't show up. Maybe she will, I don't know. I don't, I shouldn't say that. But she might show up, but then you you deliberate as judges, not council people on the facts and compare that to the ordinance. Determine that it's hazardous and order her to like the, I mean, the canoe that's strewn about, and then there's just some junk around there. That's fine. You could do that without going to court, and you have, you have an ordinance, Sunny copied it, and I read it, and I think it's fine to enforce chapter ninety-one, I think, or ninety.
Like the outside is fine to enforce, and then, because, and then do you just require cleanup if they don't do it, you pay for it to be done?
Yeah, we, you pay. We pay and assess.
We pay and assess.
We pay and assess. That that's really what I was gonna, the nuts, you know, the the end result of this is how much do you want to invest in this? Because maybe she'll pay, because you charge and assess. I mean, maybe you spend five thousand dollars cleaning this up, and you charge her, and she pays you, possible. Rare, though, a lot of times they don't pay, and then you assess it to the taxes. That's what I was telling Sunny, before you start any of this, check and see if she's updated on her taxes. See if she's going quinn or not. Do some investigation and do a figure out kind of. Uh, but I also am a big proponent of what Sunny is saying. They're not listening, but I'm a big proponent of just trying to work with the property owner.
I mean, how many years did you do it?
Well, I mean, I agree.
Six, seven years already, I mean.
Well, and I I think what the the mayor is saying is right, like, you you just, if she has made progress, Sunny said she's made progress. Is that true? You think?
No, with Mary Ellen.
Yeah. So if she's making progress, you got, it's cheaper for the city, it's going to cost you money to do this. It's cheaper for the city to just have her do it. Or she, um, Sunny had said there's somebody helping her, uh, not the actual owner, but there's a gentleman in the picture that's kind of helping her, so. That that's what you should do, you should try, but if you don't, I mean, certainly, if that's how it looks, I think the outside of the property, I don't need to be a building official to tell you. I think the outside of the property looks like it could do some. You know, it's junk to that property.
So Sunny, they've.
Yeah, I mean.
I didn't put it, or just.
You see.
Did you see the roof?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's like the one I just did. I was just telling Sunny, we just tore our house down. Yeah, I mean, so that could, the weather could be penetrating that, obviously, and so, but then, so then that's.
Broken windows, too, you said.
Well, that's what I was telling.
That's on the backside of the property.
But the big thing, what I would think about is securing it from the outside. So making sure the weather, because if the weather gets in that hole for enough years, it can topple the whole property over, so. What you need to do, if there is a giant hole in the roof, is that what you're, that's kind of what that would like to me.
Yeah, it's teacher.
So then what you might want to do is do a, get her consent. Just ask for her consent, you know, can we have our building official go in and inspect it based on this hole? If you have a good rapport with her, she might let you do that. If she doesn't let you do it, you can get a warrant, administrative search and seizure warrant, which I've done a number of times, we're doing it, we'll listen in the process of doing it now. Get a judge to get the warrant, and you go in, and then you have to hire your building official too, remember. So I can't do this, you can't do this, you're not a licensed building official. You can organize it, but the building official CMS probably, like we talked about, you know, so then. Then they would do a report, you know, based on the warrant, and then we would look at the report and say, is this, you know, what are the code violations here? But I I just, I'm worried that if it's been like that for that long, I'm not a building official, so I, I mean, but I've done enough of these now to know. And I've done a lot of these things, so I know that when the roof is exposed to the weather, the weather gets inside, you can have real mold issues and real basic habitation injuries.
And.
And then the last thing I told Sunny is the one we did in Winona, there was a a one-month gap from when we tore it down this week to when they had to do hazardous abatement, because there was asbestos in it. They go in there, the police that went in there before the demolition, and people had been in there.
That's what I just asked. I'm like, are there squatters? I feel like that's a really.
Drug. The, there were needles all over the place, the police had to search the whole thing. So you got to make sure it's secured from the outside if you're not going to do something. So I think there is something to do there, but I would just try and get their consent. It's like you're working with them to inspect it and see if if you give them a list of things, you know. Maybe they can at least secure it from the outside, patch the roof sufficient so that it salvages the property. If your building official thinks that's, I mean, the building official might go in there and say, this is unsalvageable.
Is there a basement? What? Is there a basement? Do we know that?
Well, I have, I have no clue. I, what I've read about this is. That's the process you need to do, so I don't, I don't think we're at the point of doing anything yet. I think we need more investigation and more working with them. I think I'm, I'm always a fan of not doing less is more until they really show that they can. You know, that there's something you need to obeyed in that. And then look at the city of Detroit. I mean, Detroit's got hundreds, thousands of these buildings, and they just let them sit there. Why do they do that? Because they can't afford to go, it's expensive, so that's a policy issue for you is you know, do you want to invest the resources in that? Uh, and how much do you want to invest?
We want to start because it might not be the only place.
Well, yeah. Well, that's, that's what John Topper had said. I mean, I talked to him very many times, and he got along just fine, but he was just saying there's other places.
Right, right.
Another thing, it is a hazard from province. Talking to him, if you're joining, it says there's definitely a lot of rats. They worry about their kids. I get that, the whole trespassing thing, but if the child would go on that property and that helps with fall-ins.
Right, that's why it's got to be secured from the outside. That's a big, that's a big thing is all the windows are secure, the doors are boarded up, nobody, and it's locked secure, so nobody can get in there. Kids, nobody can wander in there. Almost person gets the roof collapsed on them. No, I mean, you can't. So that's the important, and I don't know what state it is. You need a building official. We're just guessing, so there's no point.
Just. We can work with Sunny and keep her abreast of step by step, so we're nice. Yeah, putting ourselves in a bad position.
Okay, are we able to put dates on things? Well, I think first. Kind of mile markers. But before you do that, you have to send them a letter telling them exactly what they need to do, exactly. This is where I get on staff sometimes for you got to tell them, you can't just say fix your property. It's got to be, you need to re-roof. The roof is in violation of this provision of the state building code, or this provision. Here is the provision, here's exactly what you need to do to remediate it. Here's the deadline to do that. That's and so it's, it's not enough to just look at the photos and say, oh, that's, you know, you got to be real specific and get people to notice what they need to do. So that's my choose on Sunday.
Uh, scheduling budget workshops.
I'll send you all an email, you respond to it with the last reply, the best, the best day in my that's going to work for you, and then I'll.
Make vote to adjourn.
I'm, before we do that, we got to make a motion to consent agenda. I do that?
Second.
Yeah, all favorites say aye. All you want to make a vote.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
For second, I would say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you for having me.
Oh. Yeah.